And conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation significant exposure to litigation for Senate pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine B to potential cases. And then also pursuant to California Government Code section five four nine five seven B one, consider appointment, performance, discipline or dismissal of public employee city clerk. Agency negotiator will be city clerk. That'll be it.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any comments from the public?
I have no hands raised and no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizendez?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time we're going to resume the meeting of September 7, 2021. Councilmember Burns, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mary. Yes.
Ready, begin. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, is that we do not surrender.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir. Roll call.
Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Vice Mayor Resendiz?
Present.
Mayor Velazquez?
Here.
City Manager Miller?
Present.
Police Chief Reynoso?
Here.
And the record will show City Attorney Apperson is absent.
Thank you. City Manager, will you please report out from closed session?
Agenda?
Oh, verification of agenda posting.
Verification of agenda posting. The agenda for the City of Hollister City Council regular meeting of September 7th, 2021, was posted on the bulletin board on September 3rd, 2021, at 8:35 a.m. per Government Code Section 54954.2. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, will you please report out?
Sure. On items 1 and 2, conference with labor negotiators, staff was given direction on the two litigation items, also staff was given direction, and then pursuant to the appointment and performance of the city clerk, direction was also given, and closed session ended 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, sir. We're going now move to the consent agenda. Are there any items council like to pull? Do we have any from the public?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item A5.
Is that it? Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Resendiz?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. We'll move to item A5.
Miranda Eberly?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Miranda Eberly. I request your police report. This, can you please? Mr. Tim Burns, you say you're a previous law enforcement, correct? Does this look like a redacted police report?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you're going to have to, we can't go back and forth with council members. Go ahead and...
Okay, well, I was not provided a properly redacted police report. I don't see how they could completely leave out the investigation. There's no pending litigation, so you all have ahold of your support, and hopefully I'll be hearing from you in regards to my request to Brady, Captain Reynoso also, and I'll be getting ahold of Attorney General. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any other speakers?
I have no other speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Resendiz?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. We're going now move to C, public input. This is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby, and it will be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. If you are joining us by Zoom, please click on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you are joining us by Zoom using a cell phone, please press star nine. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, with a maximum of 30 minutes per subject. Please note, state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Do we have any speakers tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Carol Leonore.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, council. At the last meeting, I heard Vice Mayor Resendiz state that the current council is much better at getting things done than past council. There is nothing further from the truth. Business was conducted and decisions were made. As I recall, we did not continue much business. We made decisions based on facts and got it done. Take, for example, the fire services contract and tax sharing agreement, two important items. Just because you and Mayor Velazquez dissented on most items doesn't equal business not getting done. You kind of indicated that the past council lacked ethics. I know you aren't talking about me, at least I hope so, because I will defend my ethics.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. We are supposed to be addressing the council entire, please.
Mr. Resendiz, thank you. Go ahead and finish, Ms. Leonore.
And you wouldn't be, it's, okay. I will defend my ethics, and you wouldn't be saying it now if Marty was sitting there. Since Marty is not here to defend his ethics, I take it upon myself, whether you agreed with him or not, there was nothing unethical about Marty. He did what he had to do to secure equal rights on the council, and I thank him posthumously. It wasn't even an hour, and I am speaking to the full council. It wasn't even an hour after adopting the ethics ordinance that Vice Mayor Resendiz was calling honor and rig ignorant for asking questions regarding the unity poll.
Ms. Leonore, at this point, I'm going to stop you. What I'm asking, or what your public comment is about, is bringing business forward that the city council together can act, vote on, and work through the process.
No, I'm exhibiting my free speech right to comment on council comments.
I know, but we're not going to go back in time to talk about what happened two years ago, five years, or 10 years ago.
Well, okay, I'll agree with you, Mayor Velazquez. Well, then, inappropriate comments such as the ones made at the last meeting by Vice Mayor Resendiz on saying unethical behavior, and you got, is that not talking about the past? So I'm commenting on what he said there. I'll continue, please. I find it downer comical that Vice Mayor Resendiz's concern on social media is concerned with social media regarding campaigning. If that isn't the height of hypocrisy, I don't know what is. Try to remember, I am still a resident here, and if you keep negatively alluding to me, I will keep commenting. You offended me last meeting, and that's why I'm commenting this evening. On another issue to the full council, respectfully, one regular meeting is not adequate for the public. Maybe you need additional staff to get it done bi-monthly.
Thank you.
My last comment is related to reckless driving I see every day, but mostly weekends. Is somebody interrupting?
Yes, I am interrupting. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leonore.
You interrupted me, which is why I wasn't able to get it done.
Very good, dear chef. Great.
We're going to go through this and understand, after previous years, the city council enacted rules to make sure that we wouldn't be here attacking one another, or here having conversations. But, Ms. Leonore, as a former council member, your other points should have been the items brought up as a council we could work on. So please, in the future, if you could refrain from attacking a council member or responding, we don't, this is not going to be, as in the past, a Facebook forum to attack one another. Those days are over, and I'm happy to say we are working together well as a council. So, thank you very much.
We'll move to next speaker.
Elias Salinas.
Good evening. Please note, Government Code states that the law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. You must hear the public input without interruption. You have established rules and policies that only fit for your agenda and not for anybody else. You don't like being brought up on a subject, that's on you, because we are here and we can criticize your job that you're doing, whether it's a great job or whether it's a bad job, but you are not entitled to stop us from public comment, because that is our constitutional right. Council members may not and should not be contacting staff directly, whether it's management or the city manager, to direct them to do something. You may contact them to ask them to place something on the agenda, but you are not directed to tell them exactly what it is that you want. That is up to the entire city council. This has been going on for a long time, this is not the first time I mention it, it continues to happen. You established these policies that only apply to something that you like, and if you don't like it, you stop us from talking. I can be up here, and I can be three minutes, and I can say anything that I want about the entire council, and I may name you. You cannot stop me. You think that the new rules are legal, they're not. Unfortunately, you have a city attorney that needs to go, because he's not giving you and lacks municipal code experience to tell you what you can and cannot do legally. That's on all four of you right now, that you should be able to be looking for an attorney that can give you guidance, because you guys have placed yourselves in a situation where you're going to be sued, because you're trying to shut us down. And what you just did with former councilman Carol Leonore was completely wrong. You made a comment, you broke the government code, and you broke your own rules. You're supposed to stop the clock and make a comment on something else, but not directly attack her. She can make any comment that she wants, like anybody else. It just irks me to know in how it is that you, as a council member, Resendiz, and you Mayor Ignacio Velazquez, continue to dictate what can and cannot be done. It needs to stop, and you have two other council members, that it is their duty to know what policy is, to call to order when you start getting offline and you start on your high horse, that you can tell anybody what they can and cannot do. I also, at this time, request that the council consider taking the dispensary and adding it, and letting more people apply for it.
Thank you very much. I will repeat what I said earlier. This is a forum, as residents who come, speak to us, on issues that are happening, no, happening within our community, so we can help solve those issues. It will not be a forum to, again, as in the past, spread rumors or accusations. That's not what the city council is about. We're here for you, but we're not going to go through those same times again. We don't need to do this. We learn from the past, we're working together, and we appreciate your help, rather than making accusations, emotional accusations. It's just not helpful for our community. So, thank you very much.
Don Quixinan?
Gentlemen, I am not here for anything controversial, I'm here for a couple of stop signs. Some of my neighbors are here, from the Maple Chapel Street area, were requesting two additional stop signs. I've spoken to my councilman, Mr. Perez. He advised me that it costs several thousand dollars to do a traffic study. I implore each of you to drive down Maple Street, heading east, come to the stop sign at the corner, stop, try to make a turn to the right without getting hit from someone speeding down Chapel coming from the left, because you can't see him. So, that's my ask, is that you guys go out there, and maybe you can expedite this through the development department, so that you don't have to spend 10-plus thousand dollars to do a traffic study. The traffic since the new houses went in on that corner has gotten to be just crazy. People speed, I've almost gotten hit, I can't tell you how many times, just trying to turn onto Chapel Street, coming from Maple Street. Also, I want to talk about trying to get out of our driveways. Friend of mine was backing out of my driveway and got hit by somebody speeding around the corner and slammed into her. We just need to have three-way stop there. It would probably make things go a lot simpler in the neighborhood. We'll avoid some deadly accidents, and I know there's going to be a lot of activity going down there. I think Mr. Perez was telling me that there's going to be a new hotel, a strip mall, and I think 800 houses, which we tried to not get through, but we didn't, we weren't successful in that. So, anyway, that's all I have to say. Please, get us two stop signs.
You're speaking, just correct real quick, Maple and Chapel?
Maple and Chapel.
Chapel. And you said another stop sign somewhere?
Two stop signs, to make it a three-way stop. It's currently, there's only a stop sign right now at the corner of Chapel. We need a three-way stop there. It's very dangerous. Thank you.
Shirley Hawkins?
I'm a little nervous.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Hawkins, and I live in District 1, at 271 Maple Avenue, Street, in Hollister. I'm here tonight because I believe the intersection of Maple and Chapel is unsafe. Almost on a daily basis, I see close calls with motorcycles, pedestrians, vehicles, bicycles. There's children who play on that corner. When stopped at the stop sign on Maple Street, the sightlines to the left is blocked by wall, shrubbery, vehicles. I believe that is not safe, it is not safe to turn on Chapel in either direction. case, we keep adding more parks with all the new development, and I'm for parks. I'm not against parks, but we have to have the manpower to maintain the parks that we have and to do these projects. And so that was my first reason for coming. My second one is, also at the Parks Commission, Brigantino Park was discussed again and moving forward on the development of it. And I know you guys are really excited about getting some sort of traveling team fields in there so you can create some income for the city, but until you get a safe access for our youth, you can, you can't possibly in good conscience build anything out there, whether it's a road or a trail through the river. I know the bridge is a big, you know, way too much money, whatever. You cannot build anything, you cannot develop that area without a safe access. You can't expect, I mean, I know you want the traveling teams to drive there. I have passed kids walking and riding their bikes on that Fourth Street Bridge, more than once. Other people have. We need to do something about that to get safe access. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dino Marotti?
Yeah, hello, council. My name is Dino Marotti. I'm representing Ruth Gary Marotti and my mother-in-law. We've been having a problem in the back of our house. We got an old Victorian house at 644 on Fourth Street. It's an old Victorian. It's been there for years.
What, I'm sorry, what street?
On Fourth Street, 684, right?
644.
644. It's an old Victorian, it's been there for numerous years. The Gary family has been there for 56 years. They're part of District One. Talked to Rick over there, he's very helpful, but his hands are tied, pretty much, in a nutshell. I'm not against the police, I'm not against the firemen, I'm not against any single city member at all, but I feel that there's some waste going on around, for instance, the fire poles put outside. There was $12,000 right there. Police got those whirlybirds or whatever. That's another $15,000, I was told by the city manager. And then on top of that, there is another $5,000 going to train the officers. That's fine. We got that done. Well, my concern is, behind the house, going up to the electric gate that we have over there, there's potholes at 30, there's 35 yards. There's potholes that are so deep, when her mother comes, she's a special-needs person, very special needs. When her mother comes home from the doctors, with Ruth takes care of her mother and takes her to and from doctors. Every time she goes through there, she tries it very carefully and very dittily, you see, but her head snaps back and forth, and her neck is very weak. Okay? And that concerns me. I am really hot about that. I'm not asking to repave the road. I'm asking for the potholes to be filled. That's all. I go to find out that they were being done, and I thought it was the city doing it. No, it was a gravel guy that worked across, that lives across the street from us, that was filling it all on his own. He worked at the gravel company. The city never did nothing. And she, these folks have been paying taxes for 56 years, and you figure by now that something could be done with that, just potholes being filled. It'd take 20 minutes to 15 minutes apiece, and there's 15 of them within 35 yards, and even the name of the street does not even on there. You make a delivery, some guy can't even make deliveries anymore. What's the name of the street?
It's Park.
Park, Fremont.
Fremont.
Fremont. And that's ridiculous. I mean, come on. And if something were to happen to my, my mother-in-law, you'll be really, you'll be hearing from me because the city is responsible for that, I wouldn't imagine. Not to make a new road, it costs a million dollars just to fill the potholes, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Castro?
I had a question about the agenda. I was wondering where the tabled item is from last week regarding the thin blue line flag that is supposed to fly for next month, October 2021. The application was filled out properly?
It's on the agenda.
No, that's for next year.
Yeah, they made a mistake. It's, the discussion night will be about the October one. There was a mistake made on that, but we'll be discussing the October.
So that's just a mistake?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Did you notify anyone that that was a mistake or?
We just found out today.
Okay, you didn't address us, so, okay, thank you.
We will be. Thank you.
Jose Mendez?
My first meeting, I'm pretty excited and nervous, but I love it right now. It's, feel good. So I'm here about the traffic issue on Chapau and Maple Street. I live on that street. It's, I believe, I just want to get into some history of that. I live, I lived there, and two years ago, someone hit my jet in front of my house, and it shot over to the next-door neighbor, and then they hit it again, twice, it got total. I barely moved there when that happened, like, not even two weeks. So then I kind of thought, okay, that's not good, you know? So then I have little girls and boys, so we're outside playing, cars are just zipping by, and I'm new to the, I was new to the area. I'm born and raised here in Hollister. I really never really appreciated a community. I left Hollister and I came back once I had my kids, and I realized this is where I want to be. I want them to be safe and grow up in a good environment. But my concern right now is traffic. My neighbors put in their input. I would like to just say that I'm, I was looking at this fence height, man, maximum of three feet for a side of a home. The shrubs in that area on Chapau are four feet six inches and four feet on Maple Street. So to me, that's still considered a fence, it's, it's wood, and it's obstruction. So I did some measurements and stuff. I'm not engineer, but it is a pretty hard turn to turn once you go from Chapau to Maple. You have about nine feet on one side and then 20, 20 feet on another side. So you're kind of cheating the other side, so those people are really kind of hugging the, the line, the center divider, to not hit the cars that are parked on that side. I'm out there all the time with my yard and just barbecuing, I'm watching my kids play, and I don't let them out no more because it's pretty bad. Just on the way over here, we almost got hit leaving our house. There is an issue with backing up. The street has a horrible incline where it dips. So when it rains, it floods, but that's another issue. But it's just, it just seems poorly developed. And my other concern, or I would like to just also say that I would like to see a three-way stop, if anything. I mean, put some fence, some signs up, slow down, maybe one of those digital things that tell you your speed, just anything. And I also agree, I would hope someone would go out there and just survey that area and just check it out. But after five, not in the morning, not at lunch, around 5:00. We have a Starbucks now around the corner, so I could just see things getting worse. People are going to go get an expensive milkshake, you know, I mean, a coffee. And I just don't think it's going to be a good situation, especially, kids are in school now, of course, but it wasn't too bad. Now they're in school, so now you see the traffic from the parents, people going to lunch, and it's, it's pretty bad, and I just hope no one gets hurt.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have no more speakers. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. We'll now move to item D1, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll have, have staff look at getting a sign on the, on the Fremont alley. And then also I'll have code enforcement at least look at the Maple area, see if there's something we can do on a more immediate basis. And then finally, we have representatives from the City of San Juan Batista, and I was hoping that we can maybe move item F9 up on the agenda so that we can have them, accommodate them so that they can go home.
They don't want to hang around with us tonight?
I think they do this enough already.
Come on, guys. Did you want to tell the public about speed humps coming up or wait for that?
We'll wait for that. We'll do the test first and then we'll get it.
We'll test it, okay. Okay, if the council's all right to move item F9 forward, if there's consensus?
That's fine. Fine with me.
All right, let's, let's move to item F9.
Thank you. So this, this is a, for a council to discuss an MOU to provide wastewater service and its actually kind of emergency service to San Juan Batista. San Juan Batista has approximately 800 connections. Their current general plan is being amended to reduce their growth from, to 1.9%. The treatment plant impact fee from San Juan Batista, if we do go forward, will be about 2.5 million, and it's been requested that they pay it over 30 years with the interest equal to the city's wastewater bond interest rate. The MOU will also have a maximum daily flow of 1.2, 2 million gallons per day. Their current flow is, right now, is 160,000 per day. Our peak capacity flow that we can handle is 5.5 million gallons per day, and we are currently averaging 2.2 million gallons per day. And then also, San Juan Batista will be paying a monthly utility rate that is only for the treat, treatment portion of the wastewater, as the San Juan Batista will be responsible for their own collection lines. But Don Reynolds, the city manager for San Juan Batista, has a quick little presentation for council.
Welcome, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, thank you. City Manager Miller, appreciate your time tonight and your consideration of this matter. We have been working hard since I started July 2nd, 2019. It's been my focus. And just in 2020, we had 39 special meetings. COVID, of course, but water was on every agenda. So this has been our city council's focus, and with me tonight, I have members of our Water Committee, Mayor Jordan and Councilmember Freeman, joining me tonight. We came to the Hollister City Council February 1st to discuss our progress, looking towards a solution to close to a million dollars in fines being imposed by the State Water Board since 2007, and a recent administrative order on consent compelling us to improve our water systems and to find a better permanent solution. So this MOU that we bring to you does a number of things, but it's intended to be a bridge. It's a temporary agreement to get to a longstanding permanent agreement. So this agreement would, would ask the question, is this project feasible? And if it's found to be feasible, then the next step under the MOU is to form a permanent 10- or 20-year agreement. And the City of Hollister is already in a such agreement with Sunny Slope and the San Benito County Water District, and, and that agreement would be amended to include San Juan Batista. It's modeled after an MOU that we did execute in February of this year with the Water District with the same premise, where we have to import water that is less salty. So we're importing surface water from the reservoir through the West Hills Treatment Plant into our water system and blending it, so that way the water output is cleaner. And that's the ultimate solution. The, the MOU was drafted in April, and we've been working closely with City Manager Miller and the Wallace Group, who manages your treatment plant. Every time we had questions or recommendations of the Wallace Group and our technical staff, who's online, I believe, Gabe from Stand Tech, in case you have questions about some of these technical, technical issues, did negotiate through the agreement and did negotiate and discuss the connection fee. We estimated originally in section 3.12 of the MOU that the connection fee would be estimated 4.67 million dollars, and that's based on your published rates. That's based on what you charge all of your customers for both collection and treatment. Barter Wells and Stand Tech went through the agreement, working with the Wallace Group, and singled out just the treatment portion. And later in these slides, I will show you, I guess that works, does that work? Pardon? Yeah, he had it working. Oops. I don't know. Oh, I'm sorry, I was in the wrong room. This is the first live council meeting I've been to in 18 months. Just, just doing the Zoom thing. Very exciting. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. So, right, so let me back up. Now I'm too far ahead. Yeah, okay. So. Oh, it's Paul helping me. Paul, I'm still on the first slide, if that helps. Now I need to go back one more. Okay, here we go. So, right, there you go. So the final draft approved by the Hollister technical staff was brought aboard to the San Juan Batista City Council in, in, in August and approved at their August 17 council meeting. It includes the final cost analysis, rate study, and funding applications. Oh, await approval of the MOU. So we've been also looking for numerous different ways to, to fund the project. What we've done since February is determine a final path for the force main to Hollister by sending it out through county roads. And this way, we're reducing our reliance on private easements and acquisitions from 14 down to just two. That also sends the, the force main past the industrial users. So let me talk for a minute about our industrial users. They will say to you that Earthbound Farms and Trulief and Coke Farms are not industrial because they're required by our agreement to extend sewer services to them to only send us domestic wastewater. So they are only sending us their domestic wastewater. Earthbound, our biggest client, has a whole industrial water treatment plant on their premises. So their, their wash water and other water is separated, and they send us just the toilet water, and that's what we get from their employees. So their use agreements are limited to the number of employees and based on the number of gallons per employee that they would send us. What we're trying to do is get all of them focused into one location on San Houston Road, where we can monitor the quality of the water 24/7, and we can monitor the volume that it put out. Right now, we've been entrusting a third party to send us data that they have hired. We would like to do this ourselves and take it upon ourselves so that we can assure Hollister that the water coming to you is, is as good as your permit limits require. So our design should be completed by December 22, but our 30% design will be done in October. And so October is a real big month for, for us. We hope to have our, our design at 30% complete. We hope to have our environmental studies done, and we hope to have our, our rate study approved to help pay for the project. So it's going to take about nine to 12 months to complete the project, and our goal is to be done in time for the EPA's deadline, and the EPA is also on the line today if you'd like to ask them questions. Our goal is December 2023. So when it's done, the city will maintain these lift stations and the force main all the way up to the Hollister Treatment Plant. So if I've got this right, if I could see the next slide, Paul, I'm sorry, I'm not doing very well. Okay, okay, now we've, we've been through that one. Okay. Right, so this is, this is the force main project leaving north, north San Juan Batista on San Juan Highway, and then turning east on Prescott, and then using San Houston Road to come across. And that's the design for the six-and-a-half-mile pipeline. The estimated cost is 14.8 million dollars, design, acquisition, a right-of-way, and And on the next slide, Paul? It's going to end here. This is Union Road and Highway 156. And you can see that it comes in at the bottom on the right-hand side, right into the Hollister Treatment Plant to a manhole that the city will have to improve in order for the manhole to accept our pipe coming under Highway 156. It avoids impacting the Hollister Collection System entirely because it terminates, our responsibility terminates at your treatment plant. The city plans on sending, on average, we've calculated about 160,000 gallons per day. It's actually gone down since 2017, I think through the use of water conservation toilets and other efforts. Our general plan, talking about growth, this is a sensitive subject, of course, we appropriated $100,000 this year to initiate a general plan amendment. Our general plan was adopted in 2016, and every five years, we should amend it. And to that end, we did not adopt a sphere of influence and take it to LAFCO. And so this has been brought forward to LAFCO, and Bill Nicholson and I are becoming great friends, because we have a need to establish a sphere of influence and control growth in our city. And so this is why we've appropriated the funds and established an ad hoc committee to study a general plan amendment. Right now, the general plan estimates a 3% growth rate, and the city has never grown at 3%. The average over 10 years is right around 1.9%. So we amended our water and wastewater master plans to include this 1.9% growth rate, and it's based on the general plan. So the number that you see in the MOU estimates a 1.9% growth per year. And as Brett referenced, it's just, our, our portion of 160 gallons per day is, is a small portion of, of the total. So with that, I've skipped over a lot of things quickly, and I'm happy to go into more detail on- So with that, I've skipped over a lot of things quickly, and I'm happy to go into more detail on, on any of these matters. But that's the end of my presentation. Thank you very much.
Do you have any comments, or do you want to have any public comments first?
I'd like to reserve my comments until after public comment, Mayor. Thank you.
Do we have any speak parts?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Elias Salinas.
Good evening, council. I have been advocating for years and years that San Juan, San Juan Batista should hook up both water and sewer to the City of Hollister. I would request an explanation to the citizens of the county as to why. I thought it would be a great idea, since one fifty-six is being expanded, why not decide and get it done and use one fifty-six instead of going through all this meandering, whatever? Maybe it was looked into, but the construction is there, the, the permit, the permission can be granted from the state, and it's more direct. It is shorter route. So I don't understand, the permission has already been done. It's just a matter of communicating with Caltrans to get permission. PG&E is already doing the underlying, underlying wiring there. So it would just be a matter of adding the water and the sewage. I think it would be American Amoco. We all know that San Juan Batista has a water problem, and we all know that they are, they have absolutely a big issue with the sewer, and the City of Hollister had that issue many, many years ago. So we can sympathize with the problems that the City of San Juan Batista is going through. So I think it's a great idea that, as advocate for the citizens of San Juan Batista to have something. They have issues all the time. Their pipe systems are well over a hundred years old. I think it's like a hundred and fifty. And they're going to have, they're going to have that impact as well to get new lines within the city and then get those lines hooked up to this new system. I personally would like to see, and I know that the mayor's going to disagree with me, but I would like to see, I don't think it's, I'm going to call it a regional, but it's not, that's not the correct term. But I would like to see the City of San Juan Batista, the City of Hollister, San Benito County, and Trespinos actually eventually become a sewer and a water corporation, however it is. Two city councils, two councilmen or supervisors from each city or from the county. A city, one from each for, or anyway, just the way they do with other, other committees. So that it can be, it can be brought up and it can, you know, they can talk about it. It could also go to, I mean, if something that, that's disagreeable, obviously, just put it up to a measure and let the citizens of the entire county decide whether that's what they want to do. So thank you.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a reserved spot for you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. So I, I, I think that is a, a great question Ms. Salinas raised. Why not take more direct route? I'm sure that there's a rationale to how we've gotten to this point, and if you could explain it, I would appreciate that.
Sure, that's my pleasure. Thank you very much. There's a couple issues with going the direct route, and that is the location of our collection systems on the north side of our town. And so it would require then to, to double back all the way through town. Secondly, it is Caltrans right-of-way, and I know they're starting the one fifty-six bypass. But if this project takes more than three to, three to four years, we're going to miss our deadline with the EPA. So timing and, and meeting the EPA's deadline is also important. But in working with the prior RMA Director, they were more than welcome to letting, allowing us use the, the right-of-way in the county roads and understand that we have the same accessibility, but working with our county partners instead of our Caltrans partners. It's just a lot easier. So we have the, we have a soft go-ahead. Of course, there's encroachment fees that we have to pay the county, but we're able to use this shoulder and not necessarily go down the middle of the asphalt. It's just, that's what StanTech did when they came on board on, in February, is they spent three months picking the best path, and we agreed that this was the best path. It's really important to our residents, if we can keep the industrial users sewer at their plant and not in our house. And if we can go by and pick it up on the way, then it's a better project for everybody. So that's just, that's some of the reasons.
Thank you. For the Hollister City Manager, Mr. Miller, will, if the city moves forward to initiate this agreement, will this require any additional staffing on behalf of the City of Hollister?
No, because the San Juan Batista will be responsible for their collection lines. So they'll be responsible for cleaning them, maintaining them. All we're going to be doing is processing the, the wastewater, which will be all we already does and is already, would be planned for accordingly.
Thank you. My final question, if you sir, would be, knowing that the City of Hollister has anticipated, and we have development always going on here, has, has your assessment of our capacity factored in our forecasted and our committed growth?
Yeah, we, I mean, we looked at it. I mean, like I say, eight hundred connections is, is a, that's a small, recently has been a small development for Hollister. So yeah, we can handle it, and we have the ability to expand our capacity also.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I appreciate it. Mayor, I'm going to support this, and, and that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from council?
Just some comments if I can, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. First of all, welcome our colleagues from the neighboring city to the City of Hollister. It's good to see you guys. And then I just wanted to make mention that we talked about this at the last intergovernmental. So those that were there, it's probably going to be repeated for you, but I believe that my colleagues here have not heard it. If we're thinking about expanding broadband services out in the county, I know that's something that's a high priority of both San Juan Batista, the City of Hollister, and the county. And we're going to go ahead and open it up for the sewer lines, then I would just say that we ensure that we do the broadband at the same times. We can have those two things running side by side. That would be very beneficial to, to everybody and all the citizens. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
We were just discussing, well, San Juan Batista will be getting water from San Benito County Water District also. So we're, we'll, we'll figure out the best path to get some conduit in there.
Right. So I do have a few comments. I want to thank the council members here, Mayor, there she is, council member, for coming. It's, this is a, an opportunity to show what partnerships can do. This has been a conversation for, for a while here between Hollister and San Juan, and there were some questions early on. If it can be done, it was looked into at Lafco. I think there was a question before if Lafco is all right with this. And yes, it does work with Lafco legally because we're two government agencies providing the same services. So the key to this agreement is that we're providing services within our jurisdictions and not just out anywhere. Somebody made a comment about providing services in different areas. This is how we got into trouble in the past with growth. We had basic sprawl happening throughout our, our community, our county. This works. This works as a partnership, and it's really, makes a lot more sense financially, I think, for, for the City of San Juan Batista to do this system. Because we, the question was brought up or pointed out that this somehow should be a system for the entire county. Why wasn't it done that way? Well, if you go back and look at the history of our sewer plant, all of you that are paying that outrageous high bill right now that we're all frustrated with, that was designed for basically the entire community. But at the time, part of that community decided they didn't want to be part of the payment of that huge facility, so chose to go on their own path, not San Juan Batista, but others. And the City of Hollister ended up shouldering the entire bill, and this is why we're paying this huge fee. That happened because of a lack of planning in the past, and more importantly, a lack of financial planning. Because when you have these plants that we spent a hundred and twenty million dollars for, you have to understand in the future, there's going to be more costs to this. And if you plan correctly, you'll have the dollars ready. When you don't, you're given a bill of a hundred and twenty million with no money to pay for it. So this is how we got into this situation. So it does make sense for the City of San Juan and us to work together on this, save some money. The only concerns I have, and I want to make sure we're addressing it either now or in the future, is the connection fee. Our connection fee at this time is much lower than it should be realistically. And the study will show what that connection fee will be in the future. I think it's important that we understand that, that true cost of that connection. Because as I said, later on, that sewer will have to be expanded, and there will be major dollars into it. We still have quite a bit to pay off on that sewer plant. But I think we can come up with a reasonable fee that's fair and not the higher fees that will be coming in the near future. I also want to make sure we're, we're clear about the, the service, what, what the true cost of that is because we got to process the water. And I, you know, our residents, as we know, are paying eighty base rate. And you use more water, you use, you get a higher base or a higher rate on the sewer too. So we have to make sure we're, we're understanding those numbers correctly, so there's no misunderstandings in the future as we have to raise rates. We want to be fair to San Juan. We want to be fair to our community. Since we're processing at a bulk, we need to understand what kind of waste is coming through. So we're, we're clear on that upfront, because the more salts or more other problems with it, it does cost more to process that water. So I think it's, it's going to be important for us to get closer to the rate what we're paying our citizens are currently paying in our, our city. So we can do that correctly upfront and not later. Because it wouldn't be, be fair to the residents of San Juan Batista to get another bill later saying, oops, we made a little mistake here. It's going to cost you quite a bit more. So I want to make sure we get that figured out. And I want to make sure we're clear on the, the services provided are for the City of San Juan Batista, not the outlying areas. This is how we got, again, into problems in our own community where service was provided in areas it shouldn't have been. Cities are where growth should occur, not more sprawl. So I want to make sure we have a good understanding of that and the, we're clear with San Juan Batista. And I, the conversations I've had with them, they're, they're, again, I love working with these partners, and we, we work all so well together. So we understand that, and of course, the future growth, a number that we can live with. Because again, we're going to have growth in our community that we're seeing right now. And we don't want to be in a situation too early where we have to pay for an expansion before we have time to pay off the current facility. So if we can work that out, I don't know if we have to do that now, or we can do that in the future. Mr. Reynolds, I, we've had this conversation and want to make sure, I just, again, want to make sure we're, we're clear about this. This is a big project, an important project, and we can get it right the first time out. That would be, I think, more appreciated by the residents of both cities.
Yeah, I will speak for Donna myself. Yeah, we want to write it the first time because trying to fix it after the fact will be really difficult.
So is that something we want to work out tonight? I, I know the council probably has more questions about our current impact fee for sewer connections. Four thousand dollars, when really it should be closer to nine to ten thousand dollars per hookup.
Correct. I mean, we are, right now, council has adopted the use of professional services to redo our sewer impact fee and also look at our rates. So we hope to have that done within six months. So that should, that'll be in effect before they hook up.
And I, that's my question. Right now, the current fee is four thousand, but the presented contract is somewhere about twenty-two, twenty-four hundred. So is that something we work out now, rather than, again, later on, the fee's going to go up, but we don't. I would agree, would it not be fair to the City of San Juan Batista to pay that higher fee? It's an existing city. It's not a new development happening. So I think, but at the same time, I, I don't believe that two thousand dollar fee is the correct amount to really cover some of the impact it will have on our, our plant. So that's something we could work on now? Is that something San Juan Batista is willing to work with us on? What are your feelings?
What I'd like to propose, Mayor, is that that be part of the permanent agreement, which we'll know by the end of October. And if things are feasible and our, and our rates do get approved, then we're going full bore ahead on this permanent agreement. And that's where, I think, I think the EPA would, would feel better if, if we had your confidence tonight, and so we could move forward.
You have, you have my full support on this project. Again, it's very important. I just want to make sure we're clear on this. It's on the record, and we could work that out. And I agree with you on that, if we can do that.
Correct. Yeah, we'll do it on the, on the final agreement.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have. Actually, I'm totally, I'm in total support of this. I'm sure all, all the minor details, we can work out. My question is more towards the, my sewer beer, beer, beer. I don't even drink. That's why.
Sewer beer is not good.
Yeah, I wouldn't try that one. My bill, or everybody's bill. So I was under the understanding that that was, that that eighty-something dollar rate was supposed to be coming down. By the addition of adding San Juan, is that going to help that, that fee come down?
Yeah, it would, it would definitely help, you know, as we have more rate pairs, there's more costs to spread across. And just kind of for information for everybody, so residential has a flat fee where our commercial rate is based on water use. But yeah, as, I mean, as we get, as we get the different hookups or impact fees, we have been using that to pay down our, our sewer bonds, which helps cut down on interest payments and our principal payments, which have, we've used to help lower our payments also.
Good. That's a good thing. But like I said, I'm in total support of this, and it's, and don't drink no sewer beer.
Okay, is that all the questions? Thank you. Is there a motion?
Some move.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Resendez?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, San Juan Batista.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
We are now going to move to item E one.
So for clarification, Mayor, I don't believe we said anything about D two, but I have nothing to report on it.
There's nothing to report on D two?
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
We're on E one?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Amber Cameron. I'm an associate planner with the Development Services Department. The item before you tonight is an appeal of action taken against the Planning Commission. Their decision to deny the applicant's request to remove condition of approval number fifty-five, a PC Resolution two thousand sixteen dash eleven for tentative map two thousand fifteen dash nine as amended by PC Resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-one, which requires the applicant to provide an emergency vehicle access, also known as an EVA, for the proposed Homestead subdivision to West Side Boulevard. This item did come before council on August sixteenth. At this time, staff would like to ask if you would like to receive the full report or not.
I believe the council had the report previous, or would they like to receive it again? Okay, I read through the paperwork.
The applicants are within the audience, so if you have any questions for them, they are, are able to speak to you as well.
Is there any questions from council of the applicant?
Mayor, I'd like to reserve my comments or questions pending the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any comments from the public?
I do. Ingrid Sywak?
Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. Hello, my name is Ingrid Sywak. I'm the owner and builder of the thirteen future homes along West Side Boulevard at the corner of South Street. Currently, the required EVA is a twenty-six feet wide open smooth concrete roadway from our interior street that will empty into a busy four-lane arterial road, West Side Boulevard. This will be a huge long-term liability for the city, twenty-four-seven and going on forever. I want to make sure the council gives serious consideration to those liabilities. I oppose the currently approved design and cannot believe any reasons for supporting it. I feel so strongly about it that I have intended now my third hearing on this matter and expended a thousand dollars in appeal fee. a thousand dollars in appeal fees to get here. I want to make sure my buyers know I did everything I could to protect them. I recognize the concern one resident from the cottages raised at the Planning Commission hearing. However, a much better solution is a type of EVA that has already been approved and installed at the Hillcrest Meadows project. It is a four-foot wide ADA compliant gate which allows people to pass without long-term liabilities from wide-open spillage onto West Side Boulevard. I don't want to eliminate the EVA, I want to install a better one, one which would allow people to egress in an emergency but not leave a wide-open gaping, gaping space guaranteeing future liability claims against you and the city. The fire department is on record saying, even if installed, they would not use it in an emergency. I hope you can support a revised design. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alex Sywak?
Mayor and council members, good evening. Thank you for hearing our appeal. At the last meeting, uh, the, the council raised two issues. One, whether the elimination of the EVA would allow us to build another home out there. That is not the case. If you look at the, the schematic of where the EVA is, it's simply a twenty-six foot wide, uh, expanse from an interior street onto West Side Boulevard. A second point that was raised was why wasn't this issue brought up at the original Planning Commission hearing back a number of years ago when the approvals, uh, the conditions of approval were discussed then? At that time, we didn't know that the, an EVA could, was not necessary. A condition, what, one of the requirements of the conditions of approval was that, once we started construction of the subdivision improvements, we would need to check with the fire department as to exactly what kind of EVA this would be. So when I initiated that call in February of this year, I was surprised to hear that the new, um, uh, fire department did not require an EVA. And in fact, at the Planning Commission hearing in April, it was stated that even if the EVA was installed, they wouldn't, the fire department in responding to an emergency would not try to gain access through the EVA, but would go through the regular street access that's provided to take care of the emergency rather than potentially spending time trying to open gates, remove bollards and so on. So, um, I, I brought you a, a little picture there with the, uh, a design, an existing EVA as is approved on our project that's down at the bottom end of San Benito Street. Uh, it's a twenty-six foot wide open skateboard park that would empty into West Side Boulevard. And, um, we think a better solution is to provide an emergency person access as has been approved and installed in the Hillcrest Meadows on Hillcrest Road, just past the little seven-eleven store. And there, the cul-de-sac is of a similar size and they have a four-foot gate that people can enter and cross over in case there is an emergency and so on. We don't want to remove an EVA condition, we want it to be a better EVA and one that won't potentially invite the same sort of concerns as the people on the Chapel Road, um, Maple Avenue issue we're talking about. You can't possibly have kids and people running out into West Side Boulevard.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elias Linus?
I would kindly ask that the board is, that the city council asks so that the public can hear the opinion of the fire chief, the police chief, and the planning department to confirm or deny what they're saying that it will not be used. I think that would make a big impact on a decision that would be made tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speakers. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. At this time, we will close public hearing. Councilmember Burns?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. With the city manager's direction or permission, I would like to hear from our acting fire chief. Um, one of the comments made was that the fire department has said that they would not use the EVA in an emergency, and so I'd like to hear your thoughts on that, sir. And it's also my understanding that, uh, it came up at the last council meeting where this was addressed, that there was a, a fire that did happen there and that the, uh, at that time, the roadway for egress was obstructed by the fire equipment, and so I'd like to hear your thoughts on that and the benefit of an EVA. I am familiar intimately with the Hillcrest, uh, location that the applicant brought forward, and I've walked it and I'm familiar with it, and I'm not sure that we're, we're comparing apples to apples in this, uh, analogy, and so I'd like your thoughts, please, sir.
Absolutely. Hi, my name's Charlie Bedoya, I'm the acting, I'm your acting fire chief. Yeah, you know, I stand, I stand behind the planning commissions, and when I was approached about this, I didn't know it was a condition of approval. So, um, when we did have that conversation, I had no idea. So usually on these smaller ones, if we have, if there's a certain amount of homes in there and they're sprinkled, we don't need it, so, but it was a condition of approval. Um, it's different from Hillcrest because they have two ways in and out, at least. This one only has one way in and out. Um, it only took one time emergency, and I would have said, no, we don't need it, but then we did have that one emergency and all it took was one person, and it was a complete blocking of the whole community on that. So with that, I am granting a variance to say, hey, we could do a twenty-foot fire access road and gate it up and lock it. So I'm okay with cutting it down from a twenty-six foot to a twenty-foot gated lock gate, so not a man, not a, not a pedestrian, but a fire access road, so we could open it up and traffic could go in and traffic could come out.
Thank you, Chief. Um, Mayor, I'd like to defer to the, I, I do have a couple more questions, however, um, I'd like to defer in the event council has questions of the chief, so we don't have him back and forth, back and forth, back and forth.
Does anybody have any questions of the chief?
I'd just like to get a clear, um, picture of what you're saying. Basically, just put up a gate, uh, wrought iron gates, um, something like what they have here, um, at a twenty-foot, and that would give you plenty of access in there.
As long as it swings, as long as it swings open to the full twenty-foot, it could be whatever gate they want.
And that would still solve the problem of balls running in the street and skateboards and all that stuff. Would that also?
It's going right into the sidewalk, so I mean, I'm not, I mean.
I guess, but my other part is, so, um, having the residents have an escape route also, would, would, how would that fit into that? Is there going to be another gate to take up that six feet?
I think a great example of one that we had was on Black Forest on Sunny Slope. If you look at that, that EVA, it's just one gate and people are able to climb over it if they need to or go underneath, they need to, but it would be, it'll be able to swing open and we can go right through it if needed. Instead of completely blocking it all off so nobody has access, so it's just the tube, just a standard tube pole that locks in the middle, and then we'd be able to go in and open it up. People could still climb on, under it, or people could still climb over it in case of an emergency. Then when we get there, we could unlock it.
It sounds like it.
Especially like the incident where we had, um, um, the whole intersection blocked off during the fire at that one house and Murphy's Law, it, it did happen, so I was corrected and I stand corrected. I did say, no, we don't and we won't, and then that emergency happened, so I'm willing to admit when I was wrong on that and it proved it that day. So we're just adding more homes there, even though it's the twelve or fourteen, we're still adding more people there and cars there with the one way in and one way out.
Thanks for standing up for that too, um, but, um, yeah, it's like, um, I, I am concerned about the safety of, of the residents and we've had a perfect example, maybe it was a good warning, um, but, um, yeah, I think a double gate, it's, it sounds good.
Yeah, it sounds good. Like I said, I stand behind the planning commission and, and the condition of approval, so I support that.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I don't know if this is a more of appropriate question for planning department than it is fire department. Was the discussion of a twenty-foot gate versus a twenty-six-foot gate given to the planning decision when they gave, um, their decision? And also, what was in the original conditional agreement as far as that goes?
So I believe that the original is a twenty-six foot i- in the agreement, so if, if that's what the agreement says, then I support that one hundred percent with what the planning commission.
Okay, and then was this discussion about a twenty-foot rather than a twenty-six-foot, was this given or was this told to the planning commission when they made, rendered their decision?
No, this, this has been, this has been, uh, uh, ongoing with an email back and forth with myself and, um, the, the builders on this issue that I said, I, I'll let you do a twenty-foot. So that's just me granting that, but I, I'm not going to go against what the planning commission condition of approval was, so.
Thank you, Ch, uh, Mr. Bedoya, I appreciate your, um, your report. Um, I stand by my previous comments that I said, and I also to stand by the decision of the planning commission. This was in the conditional agreement. You agreed to a twenty-six-foot EVA at the time, and there was a fire there, like this was, this could have been a complete disaster, so, I mean, there was a fire, there's only one way in, one way out. I still stand by my decision, I stand by the decision of the, of the planning commission, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Bedoya saying that if it wasn't the agreement, then we need to abide by that agreement. We can't start making, cutting corners and making exceptions so late in the game, so to speak. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Burns, you had another question?
I do, Mayor, thank you. So, Chief Renoso, can you give us the law enforcement perspective on the EVA, please, sir?
Um, yes, Councilmember Burns, I, I don't think it's, uh, that, uh, relevant. I know there's, needs to be an opening there and that was agreed to. There's also the ability for people who live there to go on walks and have an access there too as well, my understanding, as opposed to going the entire way around. There's also been comments about, um, concerns about other people who do not live there going in and out through that neighborhood, but that doesn't stop them from going through any access, but it's a public street. But, um, as far as the safety concern, I, I don't see the safety concern, um, that's been, uh, brought up several times about, you know, kids, uh, going in and out through their, whatever gate you put there, those kids should not be running in the street, they should stay on the sidewalk. Um, I, I don't see the liability on the city, I, I just don't see that. It, it's, it's a type of, uh, construction that's in many other places and it's, uh, very common, and there is a need mostly for the fire department for egress and, and emergencies similar to the fire that happened there before.
Thank you, Chief, I appreciate that. Mayor, that concludes my questions. I too am going to support the denial and, and the planning commission's decision. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I, you know, I.
So.
Hang on, finish. I agree that there should be this access. I think it's very important that that's made, and I know it was made clear from your department for future developments. I question why we only had one in the first place. I mean, this is, a fire takes place, those trucks need to come in and get out of their way, but at the same time, people need to exit from another source, so, um, almost all developments I've been involved with in the past for my own companies, everything is ingress egress, you have to because of these situations that happen, and it will happen, it's just a matter of time. And I, as pointed out, it happened here, so I fully support the, uh, original decision from the planning commission. Uh, Councilmember Perez?
So, so this, just to confirm, this, this option of putting the gate that the fire department is, would be all right with, hasn't been before you guys?
Are you specifically talking about the twenty-foot gate?
Yeah.
Yes, it was not brought before us as, um, mentioned by Chief Bedoya, it was a conversation ongoing with him and the applicant.
Okay, the, um.
Sorry, sir, public comment's already closed.
Um, I'd like to hear from Abraham.
Thank you, Councilmember Perez. Abraham Prado, Development Services and Trump Director, how can I help?
So, uh, well, actually, I, I feel like I'm, I'm, I'm just wasting our time right here anyways, we already got our three votes in, but, um, just, just an overall view of having a gate in there which would provide the same, um, uh, safety concern for as far as fires going in and out, and actually, it would actually be even quicker because there would be one lock to open that gate compared to having to pull up three poles, which is three locks and pulling up three pipes, so, I mean, just an overall view, I mean, I know you can't make a decision on it. The other part about that I, I'm not comfortable with is that there's, this was already in plan, and, you know, it's, so I am kind of going back and forth there, but, um, just.
Thank you, Councilmember Perez. Yeah, so as, as mentioned, this project originally came in with the, um, before the planning commission, and the planning commission approved it with the, uh, condition of approval that an emergency vehicle access at twenty-six foot wide was, um, be in effect. As, uh, Chief Bedoya indicated, he, he wasn't aware that that had already happened during, when, when the original planning commission approved it, um, Chief Bedoya, I believe, was not part of our development review committee. Um, now he has been for, for the last few years, and so, um, he has all the background on these last projects. At that time, he was not, so, um, hence the reason why he came back to us afterwards and, and indicated that and appreciate that from him as well. So when the, when, um, the applicant, uh, that has the approval, Mr., Mr. Sywak and Mrs. Sywak came in, they, um, uh, came in and they, they, uh, asked if it can go before the planning commission again specifically for this, for this condition, um, to try to see if it can be removed, um, and the planning commission at that time unanimously indicated that they supported that it stayed, which is why we're here today, because they, they appealed that.
Okay, so, so let me take, let me say it a different way.
Sure.
So if the applicant wanted to come up and say, hey, instead of doing the poles, instead of doing the six-foot gate, if we wanted to do a twenty-six foot gate, um, they still actually go back and do that process still?
At, at this point, um, the gate, twenty-six foot wide gate, emergency vehicle access is what was required. Um, if, if you as a council want to change that requirement, you, you have the ability to, to do so, if that's, if that's your, your prerogative, um, but, but at this point, if, um, if, if it's, if the appeal, um, the decision of the planning commission is upheld by the council, then the twenty-six foot wide emergency vehicle access would be required to be built.
So basically, instead of having three poles, they could put up a gate?
So right now.
That would have to go be back before you guys.
If, if, yeah, so right now, the twenty-six foot wide gate is what is required, um, unless you want to change it to put the poles, um, that, that's your, that's your prerogative, you, you can make that recommendation and that change, but right now, um, what was before you is, um, the appeal of them, the applicant wanting to remove the twenty-six foot wide gate requirement. And like, and like, uh, Chief Bedoya indicated, the, the, um, the gates that was referred to as in the Hillcrest Meadows development, that, that is a pedestrian gate, however, they do have to, um, access one of a Trinity and one of a Sawtooth, um, that, that particular development, so it is a little bit different. Um, as, uh, Councilmember Tim indicated, it, it's, it could be a challenge of comparing them apples to apples, um.
Well, I guess what I'm going off of is the picture that we got here, and, and the one with the three poles in it, um, eh, um, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the six-foot gate, so I'm saying if they put in a, uh, if they came up with another plan to put in two thirteen-foot opening gates, it would, it would be able to solve both problems and, um, fire would still have access and they would still be able to, um, I don't know how you designed to put in a, uh, a gate that someone else can get out of there too. I, I just think there's a, there's another, the, we're only looking at two things here, yes or no. What, what about another option? Can you, can, can, maybe they guys can come up with another design to have the gate but not, because I don't, I think these poles, I think they look funky. I don't know, is funky a good word? But it's like, they do. So, uh, uh, it's, a, a gate there, I think would look nicer and it would give, um, the fire department access there, and I think there's another solution, so hopefully you guys can come up with that, but, yeah, not those poles.
Councilmember Perez, good point. So those poles is, is a picture of a development that's off. So those poles is, is a picture of a development that's off of, of seven little extension right before Union on a project, uh, development called the Saddle Brook Development. And, um, those poles are, are not, would be proposed, um, on this. It would be an actual, um, fire, uh, gate that's, uh, reviewed and approved by the fire department, uh, prior for them to installing. Yeah, that, that is a picture that the applicant indicated as, as a potential option, but the condition indicates that they would have to do an actual gate as reviewed and approved by the, by the fire department prior to installation.
Okay, yeah, I was just going off this picture here, so, but.
Point taken, yes.
Yeah, so, I, 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 I support the fire department having access. I just hope that we can come up to work to a better idea, um, than that.
Thank you, is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash one-seventy, um, and follow the planning commission's recommendation to deny the amended tentative map.
There's a motion.
Second.
There's a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Resendez?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries four-zero.
Thank you, we'll move now to item E-two.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, and my name is Christian Bules, I'm with the, um, Engineering Division. Uh, the item before you is a subdivision improvement agreement and a deferred improvement agreement for the West of Fairview Phase One B. This project will consist of one hundred and thirty-three single-family home. Uh, this project had received a tentative map approval back in two thousand and seven. Uh, all the improvements, including roads, water, sewer, and storm will be all, uh, public. Are there any questions for stuff?
Any questions from council? Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
Bridget Coler?
At this point, I will open public hearing.
Yes. Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, my name is Bridget Coler. I am the Vice President of Forward Planning with Lennar Homes, and we're the developers bringing this, uh, forward. I'm here this evening to seek your approval for the subdivision improvement agreement, the deferred improvement agreement, and the final map, and authorization of agreement for improvements for the Phase One B West Fairview. It's a hundred and thirty-three homesites, uh, portion Phase One B. Um, as you may recall, council took action in May to extend the development agreement that include, is included in this property. That just recorded in June. Um, the city engineer has found the, um, final map in substantial conformance with the vesting tentative map approved in June of two thousand. Um, as you, um, earlier took action to include these properties into the, um, CFDs to enact those, uh, enact that entitlement to help this community, uh, pay, make sure it's paying for itself. Um, this is the final ministerial approval needed for this, um, community to keep it going forward as planned and, and approved previously. Um, and I'm here primarily to answer any other questions you may have with regard to, um, the development. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any of the speaker cards?
We do, um, Elias Salinas?
Good evening, council members. I ask that the supervisor, I'm so sorry, I haven't made it into a city council meeting in a while, and I keep calling you supervisors, I apologize for that. Um, I request that the city council approve the resolution for these, for the Lenor Homes. It's been a long time in the planning, it's been, uh, I think they, I heard two thousand and seven, but actually it goes longer than that. In two thousand and seven, they actually finally came to the city with some papers. And it's, goes along with the influence and the other homes that are already on the east side of Fairview, this is called the west side. So I go, oh, I should do airline highway, anyway. I request that, that it gets, it get passed. Uh, she already has mentioned about the affordable homes that have been taken into consideration, which brings the city, um, closer to being in compliant with the state mandate with having to have affordable homes, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
This time we'll close public hearing. Is there any other questions or comments from council? Just so we're made clear with the public, this project has been approved, tentative map's been approved. This is more technical paperwork for the other improvements that need to go processed through.
Yes, that is correct, this is just to ensure that, uh, the improvements, uh, will be done. Uh, the developer has already posted, uh, bonds, uh, for all the improvements. So it's just making sure that the project will be complete.
Thank you, just want to make sure the public understands. Is there a motion?
So move.
I'll move.
There's a motion, Mr. Resendez, are you the second?
Sure, I'll second.
Does motion is second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Resendez?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries four-zero.
Thank you, we'll now.
Mayor, before we move on, could I ask for clarification on E-one? Um, the motion was made for, from Vice Mayor Resendez to uphold the planning commission and deny the appeal.
Yes.
The recommendation was, um, to adopt the resolution.
So, sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, so staff's recommendation for the E-one item, um, was to adopt, um, a resolution of the City of Council of the City of Hollister, accepting the appeal for Alex and Ingrid Sidewalk overturning the planning commission's decision and removing condition number fifty-five from P.C. Resolution as amended by the City of Hollister, uh, two thousand seventeen dash thirty-one for tentative map, uh, two thousand fifteen dash nine to eliminate the requirement for an emergency vehicle access.
Yes, his motion was to deny the appeal. He did say, uh, approve resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash one-seventy and deny the appeal.
But we would want to deny the resolution, correct?
Yes.
Deny the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so, do we need to have that informal vote again?
Please.
We'll move back to item E-one and formally, the motion should be to deny resolution.
Okay. Number. I'll move that we deny resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash one-seventy, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, and there was a second by.
Second.
Mr. Burns, and we'll do roll call vote one more time to cover it.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes, we're going to deny.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Resendez?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion pack carries four-zero, thank you.
Thank you for catching that, those can be tricky sometimes.
That's, that's why we like our planning staff there, they catch these things for us.
Thank you. We'll move now to, oh, wait, it's eight-thirty-one, we take a ten-minute break.
To the incident that happened with the firefighters, as with, with the police officers. I would like to see that, make sure that they all get vaccinated as well. And with regards to Jacobson versus Massachusetts, it overrides having to go through their union to have to approve them to be vaccinated. So it's something that I would hope that the city council approves. I know it has nothing to do with this resolution tonight, but it was, it's something that should be brought to the attention of you all so that moving forward, we can do something to try to end this pandemic.
We need to stay on the item. Thank you.
I have no more speakers. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Is there a motion from council?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizendis?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
We'll now move to item F two.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Sydney Vega. I'm a human resources technician in the city's human resources division. All right, I have a few items tonight. The first one, F two, is approving, adopting a revised job description for the position of airport manager. On the August second meeting, you saw some reservations and had recommendations. These recommendations were to more clearly define the, and set expectations for the position, as well as include the master's degree wording in there under the experience training qualifications. So those revisions have been made, and staff is recommending adoption of the revised job description.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Elias Salinas?
Thank you. I don't know if I, I read the, the description, the job description, and it was my understanding that there's a set of what experience that they should have, or a bachelor's degree. And then I think I heard masters, but I don't know, I think it missed just the, was the master wording of the job description. I would highly recommend that a position like this, that's going to be the manager of the airport, would have a bachelor's degree and not or based on the experience. And that being said, I did not pull a card for three and four, but I request the same thing if it also states the same, that it's or a bachelor's agreement, degree. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion from council?
Mayor, I actually do have a question before.
You do have a question. Go ahead, sir.
Yes. Can you confirm for me? I, I don't have it up in front of me right now. So if you just clarify that for me.
Yeah, what it's, I can answer that. I'm looking at it right now. It says, master's degree in public administration, business management, or related field is desirable.
Okay, but a masters, but is a bachelor's required?
It's, sorry, before that says bachelor's degree from an accredited college or university with a major coursework in aeronautics, aviation business administration, aviation, environmental science, or related field. And then, and then it goes on to the master's gr, degree is desirable.
So, so based on what you said, the, the BA, BS degree is a requirement then?
Correct.
Thank you. That's the clarification. I'd like to make a motion to move forward and approve the request.
Go ahead, sir.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, and it's not in, you cannot just have experience. You have to have the bachelor's. Is that correct?
Correct.
Answer your question, sir.
I, I didn't hear him.
Oh, sorry. Correct.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a motion, and there is a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizendis?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move now to item F three.
All right. So item F three, similar. So it's adopting a revised job description for the position of community services director. At the August second city council meeting, recommendations were made to separate the parks division from the community services division, and then add it on to recreation for parks and recreation department, and then as well to add that master degrees language, which we have done. And then staff recommends adoption of this as well.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Mayor Velazquez?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I may have just misread this, but as, as I look at F three A under experience, which would have been on pages three forty-three and three forty-seven, under prior, it says prior experience managing a multifaceted recreation program in the high level management or director's position is desired. And so maybe I'm, maybe I'm confusing things, but if that's there, my question would be, why would we have that there if we've now created a, a recreation and parks director position? Am I seeing something that isn't there? I, my assumption is it should just be removed.
Sorry, can you repeat this section?
Yes, it was under the experience section on pages three forty-three and three forty-seven of the staff report. It was in there. I didn't see a red line through it or anything like that. Three forty-seven, page three forty-seven and page three forty-three under experience. Yeah, we can remove the water, water sewer and streets.
Well, this would be for the community services director, so they would still be, so they would still be overseeing water sewer and streets. And then later on tonight, we'll be addressing the parks and recreation.
Right. No, my, my point was simply when I read the job description, I, I believe I read that it said, you know, prior experience in managing a multifaceted recreation program in a high level management or director's position is desired. And, and so that should, my sense is if, if it's there, it doesn't apply to this position. And so it should be removed from the job description.
Yeah, correct. Sorry, the rec, go ahead.
I was gonna say that is correct. Anything pertaining to the recreation department would fall under the recreation director.
Right. So this should be eliminated.
Correct. So we would ask that you would make that in your motion, that we remove that item.
Okay. The park, I see what you're saying. Parks maintenance. Okay. Any other questions? Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion from council?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make that motion with the recommendation that the language that I've reviewed be removed from that job description.
Of the parks maintenance?
Right.
Okay. There is a motion. There is a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizendis?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to item F four.
All right. This item is to adopt the revised job description for the development services director position. On the, at the August second meeting, recommendations were made to add the master's degree wording to make that desirable, as well as to change the AICP cert from desirable to now says possession or ability to obtain. So those revisions have been made for those recommendations, and staff recommends adopting this as well.
Any questions from council?
Mayor Velazquez?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I understand, and I agree. My only concern is when you have an open-ended statement under licenses and certificate where it says AICP within, with, what I'd like to see defined is within what period of time? Within a year, within two years? Clearly define that as a, as, as an expectation so that...
Yeah, usually we do it within a year for other job classifications. So yeah, same thing, we would ask that in your motion. Thank you.
Question for you, sir. If after a year comes by, and it is not obtained, is that person just brought down to a lower position, or?
Usually we will dismiss them, or her, sorry.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I do have a question. How long does it take to obtain that certification?
Eva, do you have any idea?
I don't know much, but I do know that it requires about 10 years of experience in the planning field. I don't know exactly the qualifications required. It, I do know that once you have it, you have to take a certain amount of courses to maintain. I was just gonna try and look up and see if I could get information on how long about it takes to get. I don't know, like if someone had the experience, like they had 10 years plus of experience in planning, I don't know exactly how long it takes to actually get the cert, like starting the process.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if a year is a sufficient amount of time to, to obtain it. That's all.
Yeah. If you give me like five minutes, I can see if I can find some information quickly online. I'm not sure exactly, so, but I can come back.
Well, we're, we're gonna go with this up to a year, and that's a...
A year, or do you wanna make it two, or split it, one and a half?
I think a year is more than the time. It's, council.
Yeah, I, I absolutely support a year. My preference is that we hire somebody with it in advance. You know, at a director levels position, where, where my sense is total comp, that'll be a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, that they should come with that, and that would be my preference. Thank you.
Sir, do we have any speaker cards on this item?
I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments from council? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve as presented with the addition that the timeframe of having that certificate is within one year of date of hire.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizendis?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna now move to item F five.
All right. This item is to approve one fully funded parks and recreation director position, as well as the job description for the parks and recreation director. At the August second meeting, it was recommended by the city council to separate the parks division from the community services department, and add it in with recreation to create a parks and recreation department that would oversee all events and activities involving parks and recreation. And this would be the first step in doing that, is having a director to oversee that department.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Mayor Velazquez, please.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I have a, a couple of questions, and so, and maybe a thought or a comment as well. I, I see where we're anticipating that the total cost per year would be $265,000 for this position. I, I am supportive of the position. I'm actually excited. I think it's past due. But my question, and probably for the city manager, I, I guess, would be, how did we arrive at the 265? Because in the staff report, there's a, a scale, and I can't get there even at top step, and even factoring in a 40% compensation for total compensation. So, so how did we get to the 265 level?
Yeah, we just used another department head real quick, because we were trying to get this on the agenda quicker. So it's probably more realistic under, variable between 180 to 190.
Thank you. I, I even feel better about it hearing that. The other questions I have or, or thoughts would be, in reading the job description, it talks about this person also maybe being involved in trees, and, and so I could absolutely see this being a, a nice segue to somebody that oversees the contracts that we outsource, and even maybe some of the internal work we do as it relates to tree management. I'd also like to see this position have some background and experience in disability friendly experience for our playgrounds. I think that's a very important thing that we're, we've talked about, and we, we need to move forward, and I know the council has had those conversations. And then also, one of the things I'd like to maybe see, and I think this could also nicely align with this position, would be management of contracts for our sand wall maintenance. I, I just think it all flows very well. So I'm very supportive of this position. Mayor, that concludes my comments. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, if I can address it, I, pretty much everything you said for the contract management, that was the plan for this, this position. I will say the ADA experience is a good catch, and I would like that to be.
Actually, Mayor, I have one follow-up question. I didn't see any professional certificates for this position. Frankly, I don't know if there are, but I just find it hard to believe that there are not. And so I'd like to know what your thoughts are, Mr. City Manager, in regards to that.
Yeah, on that one, I wasn't aware of any professional cert, certificates, but it would, I mean, if an applicant had them, we would be, that would be very desirable to us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, we want, we would like people that are forward-thinking to help improve our, our beautiful city.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I, I just, actually, it's, it's not necessarily just towards this one. It's, it's towards all of them. Just on the training and about the master's degree and education, the word just desirable. I mean, I, I, I see where it's, it's very desirable, but it's like, especially in, in the other department heads, it's like, why, why are we not making those mandatory?
So, no.
Well, we, we, we mirrored local cities. So typically, when searching for candidates
for a director level position, it's going to be very difficult for a city of our size to find someone who has a master's degree, who is willing to apply and move here for the compensation salary. However, we do like to be competitive. It is what aligns with local agencies in this area in terms of requirements for these level positions.
Yeah, and to kinda add to, sometimes somebody with a master's degree is not always the most, does, or best candidate. We've had lower level staff that were, had masters, and then not, did not work out for us. Sometimes if we have somebody that maybe moved here that has 20, 30 years worth of experience, that's probably more equivalent to a master's degree in that, in that field. So we would wanna be able to hire the, the best candidate, and sometimes not always a master's degree is the person with the, is the best candidate for us.
And, and yeah, I, I agree with, with that thinking. I just wanted to bring that up so you could say that. The reason I brought that up too is because I actually had phone calls and concerns about this. I don't know if I can bring this up, but I was trying to dispel the good old boy system. So that's why I was bringing up this question for you as city staff and HR to answer these questions. So I just wanna come to affirm that we are picking the best candidates that we get out of any pool that we get.
Correct. Yeah, we always do that.
All right.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards? Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizendis?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to item F six.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Vega.
I will make a quick comment. HR was excited that you passed it, but now they have more work to do, so.
It's a good kind of work, though.
Who's presenting F six?
I will do F six. F six is for the display of the LGBTQ flag during the month of June 2022. At our last council meeting, it was pending a photo of the flag, and the photo is now attached.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Nope.
Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Sandy Patterson?
Good evening, council. I'd like to know why this is being presented right now, when you have the thin blue line flag that was tabled twice. And at your last agendized meeting, which was on the 16th, you had the pride flag above with new business, and you had the thin blue line, which been tabled, which was old business. So you were out of order there. You're out of order again, because you've, that was supposed to be tabled for this meeting, and it's not there. Why?
It is there.
No, that's for 2022.
No, no.
I'm talking about...
They're gonna correct that. It was a...
Okay, then that needs to be brought forward now, not the pride flag.
No, that's the next item.
No, it's not.
It is the next item now.
It is not.
Ma'am, the agenda was made up. There was a mistake made on that.
There's a mistake.
They will clear that up.
Okay, then you need to... Okay, then you need to bring it forth now.
It doesn't work, and as you're saying, it's just, as it was drawn up.
Yes, it does, that's the, that's the Roberts Rules of Order and parliamentary procedure. You're you're putting a new item before an old item, you did that last time, and you're doing it again. So correct it, and you bring forth the Thin Blue Line Flag now. That's the way it works.
Ma'am.
No?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have any speakers?
Thomas Daggett?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, thank you for hearing me tonight, it's good to be here. Considering the uh, the flag to be flown, I first learned about it by reading the little newspaper that San Benito puts out, and um, it was on my driveway, I was concerned about uh, flying any flag at all. It's my opinion that we shouldn't be flying that flag, or any other flag, in front of City Council, we have the Old Glory Flag, and we have the State of California Flag, and the true meaning of these flags is sufficient for everybody, and I don't think we should be catering to any other groups, or mindsets, or thoughts, or persuasions, or however you wanna term what these flags represent, everyone should be treated totally equally. And if you decide to go ahead and go with this flag, which is your decisions, um, that opens Pandora's Box, so to speak, in my opinion, and then you have to open it up for everyone, and we don't have enough months to cover everyone. And so, I think we just oughta stick with our two great flags, try to keep people on an equal basis, and um, and go with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Elias Salinas?
Thank you, council members. I am very proud to be an American. My ancestors are Native Americans, and have been here a lot longer than that flag that represents the entire country. That flag also represents the injustice of the Native Americans, the injustice of the African-Americans, the injustice of the Japanese internments. It has a horrible history, and it has a great history, and I'm proud of it, both either way, but we have to acknowledge that that flag does not represent everybody. That flag has become political. If you raise that flag, or if you have that flag on your pickup truck, it means you're an American and you love this country. It doesn't make you more an American, or more than loving this country than I, or anybody else who does not wave that flag. And I wanna thank Councilman Roland Rosendes for bringing this forward in 2020. He's been talking about this for quite some time, it's over and done with, this is what is gonna happen, and again, it should be approved, it's already done, it's a momental, a monumental, uh, sign that those who happen to be LGBTQ, and all the others that I'm not gonna name right now, that fall under this, that we stand by them, we represent them, we know the persecution that they've gone through, they continue to do it, it's, they continue to be victims every single day. So it's not something that that flag of the United States of America represents them, this is individual flag, represents them, to show them that we support them, and I ask that you, the City Council, pass this resolution, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, is there any other questions from counsel?
None.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2021 dash one seventy-seven, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister authorizing the display of the LGBTQ plus flag during the month of June, 2022, at City Hall, to commemorate the anniversary of the Stonewall Rebellion and LGBTQ plus Pride Month.
Thank you, sir, is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion. It's sounding like stereo there.
Third.
Motion is second, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rosendes?
Aye.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero, thank you.
Thank you, we'll now move to item F seven.
Thank you. Item F seven is a resolution of the City Council, City of Hollister, authorizing the display of the Thin Blue Line Flag during the month of October, 2021. I apologize for the wrong uploading of application and the wrong wording on the agenda.
Is there, is there any questions from counsel?
Mayor Velazquez?
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you. Uh, the city clerk, do, do we have a second application, can you please explain that as well, from May?
We do, we had, we had, the first application we received from them was for October of 2021, and then we received a second application for May of 2022. At the time we received the application for May of 2022, we had pulled the flag display application off of our website, so I was holding off on that, I can present it to council in, at our next council meeting, or in October, or whenever you suggest, but we do have on discussion tonight our flag um, display policy and application.
Thank you for the clarification, I do appreciate it.
Any other questions from counsel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
I I just wanna start off by saying that I do, that I'm gonna support this, I'm gonna support it, whether they wanna fly in October or May, it doesn't matter to me, I'm gonna support it. However, after finding out about the confusion, I wish Jason, Jason was here, because I don't think this was properly noticed, so what you're saying is that we're gonna make a decision on the October for next month, but that's not on the agenda, it says May, and that's what the agenda packet is.
That is correct. Um, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Rosendes, I did speak with um, our city attorney, Epperson, and he did say because it is a a date change, everything else is the same, that we could discuss this October, I, I was very nervous about it myself, yeah.
Thank you for doing that, I feel better, and um, yeah, I'd love to hear from public comment, but I've I've already decided long ago I'm gonna support this, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions?
Mayor Velazquez, please. So, um, I too am gonna support this, but I'm I'm curious, does the May one then get tabled? This gets, I guess it's a formality, does this get pulled, or or how do, how do we do the cleanup on this?
This is going to move forward as as October, and we're gonna remove May as an as an error, and then once we discuss what the flag display application should be, or what we want it to be, or maybe call for a special study session, however we wanna handle that, we will then bring the May 2022 one forward.
Thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it.
Thank you, any other questions? Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Sandy Patterson?
Good evening again. I'm glad this is gonna be finally supported, since this is the third time before the City Council. Um, the Thin Blue Line Flag was brought in in 2014, because of two New York police officers that were shot and killed. There's two hundred and eighty-four that have died in the line of duty so far this year. There's twenty-two thousand names on the law enforcement memorial, and the law enforcement out there go through a lot, they're on the front line, and this needs to go, this needs to be approved, we need to stop tabling it, we need to approve it, and the way it sounds, it's gonna be approved, but why did it have to take so long? It should've been approved the first time. It's disrespectful to the law enforcement community to not approve it the first time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thomas Daggett?
Greetings again, Mayor and Council, thanks again for being here. It is my, my opinion now, that since we've passed Resolution Six, that we have no choice but to pass Resolution Seven, and anybody else that puts in a proper application needs to pass, and hopefully we won't run out of months, and have to break it down into days, or weeks, or whatever. If we break it down into days, then we run into the problem of uh, foreign countries' holidays, which love to be um, celebrated here, and have to fly a foreign country's flag, if we're gonna accommodate all groups, which, like I said before, we've got two great flags, in my opinion, those are the two to be flown, and not all these other little flags. I have relatives that are in law enforcement, but I'm not advocating flying their flag. In the newspaper article I read, there was the Christian flag that was considered, I'm not, I'm a Christian, but I'm not advocating flying that flag either, I uh, I'd like to see a little more separation of church and state. I think the state, and the county, the cities should stay out of the churches, but that's my opinion. Um, so, as this matter moves forward, I encourage you to pass this Resolution Seven, and allow this flag to be flown, since we are allowing number six to be flown. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Elias Salinas?
Thank you, City Council. Uh, since nineteen seventy, the California Police Officers Research Association, prior to that actually, went to the Senate, and in nineteen seventy it was passed that memorial uh, for police officers would take place in the month of May, and I request that the City Council please stay with the California Police Officers Research Association in acknowledging that the memorial, memorial for police officers is in the month of May. Uh, the, I want to acknowledge and give kudos to the Hollister Police Department that the flag flies there every day, so thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Fry?
Mayor, council members, I am Michael Fry, the signer of the Thin Blue Line Flag with the support of the concerned citizens. The Unity Flag Pole flew its first flag in the month of June, no other flag has flown in the months of July, August, or September. Um, since no one has qualified for those months, I chose the month of October, and we have qualified for this month by the application process, no other has qualified. And the very reason why we are wanting the Thin Blue Line Flag flown are for the following reasons. Even before 2021 and throughout this year, there has been an outcry of police injustice, brutality, and defunding of our police departments. Many cities are blaming the police for all kinds of their problems. These community leaders need to look into their own mirrors. Politicians are listening to and yielding to the criminals, outright terrorist groups, and liberals, who are destroying our homes and communities, the city, county, and federal buildings, and people's lives, including our first-line-of-defense police officers. The police are our first line of defense against crime, protecting citizens, and serving our communities, and all police departments are under the political thumbs of every government. In today's unjust media and community leaderships, police officers are convicted of crimes before they are charged by any authority. The police officer was never meant to be portrayed as a political official, as all politicians are viewed. They are disgraced immediately, and without any protection from the city and the agency they serve. The fiber of our cities and communities were were once built on morality, ethics, and respect, but has been degraded by immorality, lies, and hate. The evidence is seen by the political and social officials and the press affirming and condoning the actions of the violence upon our police officers, and unjustifiably so. Many law enforcement officers have retired early, or have quit their local departments because there is no trust. This is why we want to see the Thin Blue Line Flag flown over the City of Hollister, we want to honor our law enforcement officers, because there are many who serve the City of Hollister. What is more beautiful than to honor our men and women who are first responders and serving their community wholeheartedly, even to the point of giving their lives for the citizens of Hollister and to the United States of America? I pray that tonight, the City Council will pass this matter. I thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Castro?
Good evening again. Um, I uh, have a question about your um, policy and how you um, put things on the agenda, um, because I feel that Sandy was correct in saying that it was out of order. Um, something that came up months ago should come before new business, so you guys need to make sure you're following your own rules and sticking to them, because then you just look uh, like you have no credibility. So, uh, you wanted to make sure that you don't get accused and falsely accused of things, so you need to make sure that you're following your rules. Um, so, if there's a protocol, I hope that you'll stick to it in the future. Um, I'm glad it sounds like that this uh, flag policy will pass, I think it's preposterous that uh, you're gonna hold a flagpole hostage uh, from the Thin Blue Line Flag in the month of October, just because it's known for a different month, or just because the other month is known for the Thin Blue Line Flag. There was no other group, nobody put in the application, uh, and this was followed by your rules, so therefore, it should be flown, um, and it doesn't matter what month was applied for, the rules should be followed. Um, and it, I'm not sure if you are suggesting that um, you're going to change your rules in the future, and that's why you're not going to approve the May of 2022 flag, um, I think it's not looking very good if you're going to discredit yourselves by not even, uh, or already changing your newly implemented rule. Um, people have valid applications on file, and they should be followed, um, because if you are gonna scrap your own policy to suit your agenda, that's not gonna look very uh, positively on you. So, it shouldn't be uh, changing your policy to suit your desires, right? We are the people, this is our community, we followed your rules, uh, it, were you making it difficult on purpose to hope that we wouldn't jump through all these hoops, and hoping that nobody would apply, because you created these hoops that were so ridiculous? You know, a hundred people's signatures, I mean, if, your rules are meaningless if you think you can pick and choose which ones uh, you don't want to be held accountable for, it makes no sense, so please, be men of your word and your policies, thank you. Thank you.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Council? Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rosendez?
Aye.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to item F eight.
Thank you. This resolution will execute a five-year lease extension with the state of California for the Cal Fire Air Attack Base at the Hollister Municipal Airport. One of the questions from the last council meeting was what was the monthly rent? And the rent will go from $5,150 per month to $12,179.38 cents per month.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
Mayor Velazquez?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. City Manager Miller, so is that a, as I understand it, the, if I read the staff report correctly, that is for a one-year term? Or is this going to extend the contract for four more or five more years?
It will extend it to, yeah, it, sorry.
It's five years.
Five years.
Five years.
Five-year extension.
Correct.
And is, is that a, a fair market rate for the lease? I, I guess one of my concerns is, are we under-marketing this property? And I, and I understand the need and the value to having CDF there. I'm just wondering if this is a good business decision.
But the main thing with the extension was that they were already there. The state's going to only, will only pay a cer- certain amount. And part of the extension was for the helipad and also some storage area for them. And that was unused space because of the locations of those, that space, so close to Cal Fire. So, we thought it was a reasonable amount that they were offering us.
Have I heard conversation that they've been talking about building their own facility and at some other location at some point?
Correct. They, they currently have a lease with, with the airport for, it's another 20 years plus a 10-year extension to build an air ta- a air attack facility at the cross of the, the runways. The problem with that lease is that there is no incentive that, for them to build. And so, they are currently, we just found out, actually looking to buy land maybe at one of the places on the, through the fence agreement with those landowners. The reason is that it's a better financing mechanism for them if they buy compared to a land lease where it would turn over to the city after a certain amount of, you know, 30 to 40 years. So, we are working on them, with them, to hopefully have them find a location. And if they do find a location that's other than the current lease, to get them out of that lease so that the city is not held as a hostage.
Thank you. I think you've covered my concerns.
Yeah.
Any other questions from Council?
I think I.
No?
The, the question about the lack of movement on the building of the facility, I guess if, when we get to this five-year point, if they're not going to do something, we need to.
Yeah.
Make other arrangements.
I would say we had conversations with a different, our congressmen, our state representatives to try to get that to move forward, at least make them, make a decision where they're going to put their facility. Because it is a benefit to our community, benefit to our surrounding counties that Cal Fire is here. Big Sur Fire, they were a big contributor to the assistance of putting that fire out. So, we'll be, we're, we're working with them right now, trying to come up with solutions before the five-year. Is that because it's going to take them time to, to build whatever they're going to build?
Thank you. Any other questions? Any speaker cards?
I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Can you submit a card?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Give her a card after you're done, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I, I kind of want to follow up on what the mayor, the mayor just made a comment on. So, it is definitely to our benefit to the city of Hollister and the county and the surrounding areas to have this. And I would not want to lose such a valuable service to the state of California, actually. But they are currently leasing where they thought they were going to build, which is on the west side, inside the, the airport grounds. And now you're saying they may build something on, through the fence. If they were to choose to do through the fence, then obviously, it's going to be less than five years. And if so, do we lose, we lose the lease? Are we losing the lease for the land they're currently doing, where they're thinking about building? And what, what, what's the economic value for them to going, aside from, you know, being here, obviously? Is there an economic value to the city for them having to taxi through the fence? To, what's the economic value, if you know that? Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
So, the economic value would be, there would be a through-the-fence lease with, with that landowner. So, that, that would be the only economic benefit for us. The other economic benefit will be if we get them out of their current lease, that we could actually shop that property to new potential buyers of that land or lease, leases, sorry, of that land.
And they're purchasing fuel here locally.
Correct. Which we get sales tax from.
Yes. Okay. No other speakers? Is there a motion?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-179.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rosendez?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Item F nine, we have completed, so we'll move to item F ten.
Thank you, Mayor. This seems like this meeting's on the Friday, the 13th, for some reason. We also have a slight error on this one. This is not the McCarthy line, it's the McCray line. So, we're sorry for having a little bit, too many, too many letters in, in the waterline. But this resolution would be approve a reimbursement agreement with Hawkins Company for a new, new McCarthy waterline.
McCray.
McCray.
Now we know how it happened.
Yeah. Maybe I was at McCarthy's. So, our, our Public Works Inspector was out looking, surveying the, the project and realized that we had a very old iron, cast iron waterline and said, why aren't we replacing this waterline before there's brand-new asphalt over it? And so, we agreed that we should get some kind of agreement right away so that we can replace that waterline before there's a brand-new road over it. And as we know, old waterlines break, and we might as well take care of it when it's nice, fresh dirt.
Okay. Any questions from Council?
Mayor Velazquez?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, when this work is done, is it warranted so that if there was a break that was created after the work's done? How, how is that addressed? I don't know that it's a real, a reality, but it was just, you know, something that it was. I, I know under typical, as my understanding is, a general contractor, when they do work, they're on the hook for it for up to 10 years. But, but I, you know, I mean, we're going to spend a significant amount of money to do this, and it makes very good sense to do it when we're already in there. But I was just curious. Thank you.
So, there's a waterline break after they've done the work? Yeah, that, I believe they're, they're on the hook for, one, one year?
One year.
Yeah, one year.
Any other questions from Council?
So, is any, can any of this be used from the American Rescue Plan?
Uh, yeah, I mean, yes, we can, can. You know, it is an acceptable use of those funds.
Question? Any speaker cards?
Elias Salinas.
Thank you. So, we're speaking about reimbursement to the Hawkins Company. They're paying for it now. We're going to reimburse them. We've already given them a tax break. So, to me, it appears that this entire project has been funded by the city of Hollister. You know, this company is there to make money, obviously. But the city of Hollister is not here to go broke. So, is there a way that instead of approving, I don't, it just says reimbursement? Is there a percentage of reimbursement? Is it really, is it 100% liability on the city that it, that this must be completed? Otherwise, you know, because it's so old? And if so, I mean, that's not the only area in the city of Hollister that has aging pipelines. So, are we going to be going through the entire city to get something done? I, I just have a problem with the Hawkins Company taking advantage of the city of Hollister, and they've gotten so much money out of this, and it's just costing us too much money. Thank you.
Do you want to address that? Explain that. This is a request from the city of Hollister. When the city discovered a old waterline, and since they're doing work in that area, it was recommended to put in a new line while the dirt work is still being done, which is much, much cheaper than after the fact, when the waterlines do break. So, in other words, we're pre-planning to save quite a bit of money. And this is a city issue, it's not a, the company's issue. This is the city's request to basically say, hey, do us a favor while you're there and do this work, because it'll cost a lot less money right now while your tractors are there than it will cost in the future. And the answer for the other waterlines in the city, we are working on a lot of plans to do a, some major projects in the next year. So, we're working great, and we're looking forward to getting a lot of projects done next year, a massive project coming up. Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-181, sir.
Is there a motion?
Second.
These gentlemen over here. A motion and a second.
That one is getting late, he starts getting dingy.
Councilmember Perez?
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rosendez?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go now to item G one, reports from City Council members regarding their committees. Like, Councilmember Burns?
I have nothing to report, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Perez?
Nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Rosendez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the intergovernmental meeting, I think, last week, where we talked about two items. So, one of them, oh, you're going to have to help me out, Mr. Mayor. So, one of them was campaign finance reform. Oh, and the other one was, how are we going to spend our federal dollars for the COVID relief? So, essentially, I think that the city managers had agreed to work together on coming up with, with, from, actually, San Juan Baptista and the county CAO and our city manager on where to spend the monies and if that's going to go towards like broadband. I think that's a huge priority of all three entities. And then, second, it was campaign finance reform. We had a very robust discussion. Everybody agreed, and we actually took action, took a vote, and it was unanimous vote that the intergovernmental committee agrees that the entire county, including San Juan Baptista and our county board of supervisors should abide by, and follow our lead and should abide by a campaign finance reform. They were very happy to hear what we did. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have nothing to report. We will now go to item G two, informational reports from City Council. Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor Velazquez. I would just ask the chief of police or the city manager if we could provide some increased observation and patrol and maybe some enforcement in the area of Maple and Chapel. As I heard tonight, I think that, my, my fear isn't asking that. Often, my experience has been that you go and you do the enforcement, and the people that you enforce are typically the ones that are asking for the enforcement. And, and so, I, I think there could be a benefit to education in the area. And, and chief, I would really like to hear a, a professional assessment of the issues that, that we may face there as a city. I too don't know why, except because there's a requirement to do a traffic survey to put more stop signs in. And I recognize it's not my district, but comments made tonight really concern me. And so, anything we can do to get a better understanding of the, the problem, chief, I would be appreciative of. Thank you, sir. Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, that concludes my comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Perez?
Yeah, actually, we've already discussed Chapel and, and.
Chapel, Maple?
Maple, yeah. I've already, we've already got some plans going through that, with that. The, I think I wanted to ask is where we are at with the solar streetlights? If we were able to ever get a cost?
I did. And I, it's at my office, and I'll get it to City Manager. He asked me, and I'm, sorry.
Um, no.
I would like to check it off my spreadsheet.
Yeah. And did we ever hear anything back on the pickleball court, finishing that up? And if, do we need to get extra funding for that? And do we need, if, if so, do we need to bring it back to the Council?
Yeah, we'll have to bring it back to Council, because the, the quote that we got to paint it, the squares, is more than what we have still added available.
Okay. Yeah, so if we need to bring it back, I just would like to see that project finished. Yeah, unfortunately, it's costing way too much. But hopefully, we're going to get some good exercise, and I can watch him all day work. But that's all I had.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Rosendez?
Thank you, sir. I'm going to jump on the bandwagon for Chapel and Maple. And I, I thought that we were budgeted a certain amount of money to go ahead and order traffic studies. Wasn't, remember, because I remember that, because I caught a mistake. So, I thought we were allotted a certain amount of money to ask for traffic studies. So, I could be wrong, but I thought that's what we had decided on. So, maybe we could look back into that. And then, also, I just wanted to make mention that I was happy to see some new residents come to the City Council for the very first time. I, I love talking to the constituents, and it's really nice to see new people getting involved and coming out here to address us. So, thank you, guys, if you're still in the audience. And if not, just know that I'm appreciative of you guys coming out and voicing your concerns and reaching out to your councilmen. And then, my other thing was the trees. What are we doing about the trees? I've got people reaching out to me, saying that they're trying to do the right thing by trimming their trees, and then they're getting fined for it. So, I know that there's something in the works. But if we can prioritize that to ensure that people can take care of their trees and not get penalized for that, I'd appreciate that. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, if I can address the Maple and Chapel. Councilmember Perez talked to me about a traffic study. One of the, kind of where we're at right now is, there is construction planned for that area, so it might be too soon to do it. That's why we'll look at some other ways to maybe enforce that. Like I say, the chief can look at some enforcement. We'll look at code to see if there's brush that needs to be cleaned up, and we'll try to address it that way. But if we have to, we can, we'll discuss a traffic study.
And, Mr. City Manager, if I can, my feedback on those speeding signs that are portable, that move, have been very positive. They're very effective. So, if you want to possibly consider putting one of those out there, that might be pretty good.
Yeah. I'll talk to the chief about that also.
City Manager, I'm wondering if perhaps there's already a traffic study that was done with that new development there? And maybe we need to look into some of the answers, because the new development outside had to do a traffic study, and maybe we can look at that. Maybe there was trigger points.
Yeah.
I thought that's what I asked for, wasn't it?
Yeah. Well, I'll get it from Abraham.
Because the new neighborhood that was built, usually they do one at that time.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's what.
That's what I asked.
Yeah, he asked for.
Okay. See if there was there. Okay.
I wanted to sound like I'm not willing to spend $11,000 to get the traffic study.
Right, yeah.
But since we know that there's a building project that's coming up, did we already have this in place? That's, that's what I was talking about.
Okay. Okay. I don't have anything, so, City Manager?
My big thing is kind of. My big thing is, kind of for recreation, we are having music in the park on Thursday evening. Give me the hours, Tina.
Six to eight.
Six to eight.
McCarthy Street Park.
See, that's where I'm getting the McCarthy from. I was so excited about that part. That's how I got put down. So, please have everybody come out. It's gonna be a great time.
And great job, by the way, all of you for doing all these activities. All right, city attorney's not here. Chief?
Another typo.
I see that. I just saw that.
I just want to remind people also, September 11th is gonna be on Saturday. And I believe the vets, veterans are gonna be doing an event in the morning at the Vets Park. I mean, the Vets, the Veterans Memorial Building. I was advised that they were gonna be there from 8:00 to 10:30 for a small ceremony. And not to continue talking about the same thing, but Chappelle, I was talking to Abraham about that, that when those buildings were built, the ones that are there, there was a traffic study indicating that it wasn't warranted. We believe that's what it was, because I remember it bringing, coming up, having all those homes that are built there, how it would affect it. But I know that there's other developments coming in as well. It may, may be warranted, but in the meantime, we will go out there, do some extra patrol. I think we'll, we'll check, like the city manager advised, if there's any obstructions that are blocking the view, so that people can see the vehicles that are coming. And we could, we could put the radar trailer out there as well to see if that helps the issue.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. City clerk?
I just wanted to say if it would be agreeable, maybe not tonight, because we're already getting late, but at our next meeting, I could do a report, kind of just on what the city clerk does. I know that Councilmember Burns had requested that maybe each department kind of give a little bit to, in open session, so the public kind of has an idea of what each department's doing and what we're working on. So, if I could bring that, maybe not to the 20th, but to the October 4th meeting. And that's it.
That's it. Thank you. We will now move to item G3, committees. Mr. Perez, you'll do them all.
Actually, if, if, if I could get rid of one, if I, if someone would like to help me out. Tim, the 3CE?
That, that's one of the items on here, so you want to start with that conversation? City clerk?
Sure, currently, 3CE meets.
They meet during the day, don't they?
Yes.
Yeah, correct. And then they have their annual conference coming up, I believe.
The third Wednesday at 9:00 AM? And then they, they meet three times a year on the third, on a third Wednesday at 9:00 AM? I don't know if that's correct. There are special meetings and a two-day annual meeting. This is a shared seat with the City of San Juan Batista. Currently, it is our turn, so we have Councilmember Perez as our representative, with Councilmember Resendez as the alternate.
So, Mr. Perez, you can't make it to these meetings any longer?
You said this is, that it's rotating?
It is, so it, it was San Juan, even though John Freeman, what, San Juan Batista attends the meetings, I'm sure, or is it John Freeman still?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. He's on the operations board, so he has no voting power. So, what we rotate is policy board and operations board. So, next, next year, it should be where we're the operations board, where we attend but have no voting power. Where currently, we're the policy board, so we have two members and we have voting power. I don't know if that's making any sense.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you.
Well, the operation board is made up of the city managers, so, because we, just like here, I run the operations, and then the policy board is like the city council, where they make the policy decision.
So, for 2021, City of Hollister is the policy board, seated member, and the City of San Juan Batista is the operations board, limited member, is what they call it.
So, with, with all the committees that I have, if I could be relieved of that, that's great. If not, then I will continue on. I will continue to do it, but.
And this is a committee that does require a 700 form, just so you know.
Yeah, I, you know, after this, your term, I'll be willing to do it the next time if it helps. It's hard for me, because usually I'm gone during the day, too.
Yeah, everyone's gone during the day.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, yeah, it's tough. I mean, I get it. I work, too.
I know you do. December, is that when it switches over?
I show it as December 15th, 2022.
I think I'm the alternate now, correct?
Currently, it's Roland.
Oh, how about?
Well, so the other thing is, we, eventually, we're gonna get another council member, too, correct?
Oh, I like where you're going with this. Can we appoint another everything else?
Why is everybody laughing?
This is why you never miss a meeting.
But remember, in 2022, it's gonna switch. So, there'll be two members from San Juan Batista, and only one from ours will be on the operations board as a limited member, where we'll attend but won't have voting power.
So, I was gonna recommend, if you could possibly stay on, I can maybe be the alternate. So, if you can't make it, then I'll change my plans and go to the meeting. If there's a time you can't do it.
Okay.
Does that work for you? Would that work for you, Mr. Resendez?
Should I tell you now that I can't make it for the rest of the year?
Mayor, I'd like to suggest that that works really well for me.
We've still got more coming up, so don't worry.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Because I know you're, you definitely can't make it. You're in school.
So, may I confirm that the representative will be Mayor Velazquez, and the alternate will be Rick Perez?
No, Mr. Perez will still be the representative. I'll be the alternate.
I drew the short stick.
But, you know, if you give me, if you have any idea you're not gonna make it ahead of time, I could probably do it. Okay? I know it's tough during the day.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Yeah, it's, it's.
I know.
Yeah, just to add, currently, they have been doing Zoom. They were gonna do in-person, but they're still now, just, they're doing hybrid still.
Okay. Well, that helps. These meetings help when they're on Zoom. They really do.
I couldn't imagine driving to all these.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so we have that one worked out.
The other item was Ambag?
I'm good.
You're good on that? Okay.
I'll keep Ambag.
The other item was, um.
Integrated waste?
Integrated waste management, correct.
And when do they meet? Christine?
Integrated waste management, I do not have that.
It's, actually, I believe it's quarterly.
I think it's quarterly. I, I tried to get that once from them, and they, at that time, weren't holding meetings. They were gonna start back up again. I could contact Selena, because I think that's who I've been talking to.
As long as they don't meet during my work hours, I'm, I'm more than willing to take on some of the committees.
I think they do, they do meet during the day, as a matter of fact.
Okay, then. Sorry.
Maybe, Mr. Perez, you're on the committee now, correct?
Pardon me?
You're on the committee now?
He's an alternate.
I'm an alternate.
Who's the representative, then?
Roland.
Roland.
Oh, Roland is. Too bad, Roland.
Now, this was one of the ones he brought that he had a conflict with.
Yeah, maybe, uh, if the alternate can, maybe at the next meeting, request the meeting to be at after 4, as we've done with the other groups, because it's hard for most people during the day. Not impossible. Or I can be the alternate and request it. Whatever works for you guys. I don't mind. Or you know what? I'll take it. I'll take it. Okay? I'll do it. And, Mr. Perez, will you be the alternate?
Since I am? Yeah, actually, I, I wouldn't mind. I want to sit on, in on these meetings also, because I think these were quarterly, and.
You want to do it? You want to be the representative?
Not really. If you take 3CE, I'll take this one, and keep Ambag. And I'll give you Snickers.
I got one Snickers, and your Snickers, and it, those are a mix, so, there.
Where does politics come down to?
Uh, just tell me what works for you.
I'll, I'll tell you what. I'll take integrated and Ambag, and you take 3CE.
Okay. All right, change of plans.
Got it?
Rick will be the representative. For integrated waste, Ignacio will be the alternate.
Yes.
And then for 3CE, Ignacio will be the representative, and Rick will be the alternate. And then for Ambag, Rick is the representative, Ignacio's the alternate, or we're gonna switch that?
No, it's, it'll stay the same way.
It'll stay?
Yes.
The same.
Correct, Perez?
Yeah.
Yep.
Then to throw some fuel on the fire, I have.
Oh, boy.
Were you guys looking at me?
Oh, never mind. They're later on on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Good. So then we'll move to G4, establish ad hoc committees to work on charter city council term limits.
So, for G4, council will consider creating and appointing two members to an ad hoc committee to review and recommend specific language for ballot measures to become a charter city and set term limits for council members. Staff had recommended that the city council discuss, and the mayor appoint, via consensus, two members to the charter city. I believe also, it was requested that the city attorney and the city clerk be a part of this committee as well.
Okay. So, with that, I'd like to, go ahead. Do you have a question?
Actually, I wanted to clarify. I actually thought city manager should be part of that conversation as well.
Okay.
And Mayor, I'd, I'd be more than happy to serve on that.
So, I'd like to appoint Councilmember Burns and myself to that committee? If there's a consensus from the council?
I'm good. Yes.
Okay.
I'll be adding that to our list. And then, for item G5, the council will consider creating and appointing two members to an ad hoc committee to review and recommend improvements and enhancements for the possibility of a City of Hollister communication center.
Now, this one, did we kind of name somebody when we were talking about this? I don't remember.
I, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I had, like, I think I had volunteered myself and Councilmember Perez, but at, at the last meeting that you weren't here, Councilmember Burns expressed interest, I believe, I believe, in this committee. I could be wrong. But I'm more than willing to step aside and allow him to serve on this ad hoc.
So.
It's okay. I'll step back.
Okay. So, Mr. Resendez, you still want to be on, or you don't want to be in?
Yeah, I'd like to, as long as we can meet after school, after work hours.
Okay, then we'll point yourself and Mr. Burns, please.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, we have that.
Um, G6, that's yours, Brett?
Sure. So, now that everybody's ready to jump on committees, I hope this won't go smoothly. So, we're asking that the council, or the mayor appoint two members to the council of governance committee. This is for the water, the main part of it right now will be for the water master plan with the county, San Juan Batista now, county, sorry, in Sunny Slope Water. So, this would be two members from the council to be on that committee.
Do you know how often we're gonna be meeting?
I believe it's gonna be quarterly.
Would you like to be on it? I don't mind being on it. I was involved before.
Yeah, that would probably help.
It's a very important role. So, if that works, that's all right with the council members?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ignacio and, and Rick?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Okay, now we'll move to G7.
Thank you. This one is to consider amendments to Hollister Municipal Code, Chapter 2.04, to consider reducing to one regular meeting per month. We had discussed this at the last meeting and were, um, and needed to forward it to where we have all of you here. And our reasoning for doing this would be, it would provide staff sufficient time to research, compile, and prepare staff reports to ensure the city council receives comprehensive information for more informed decision-making. Once a month meetings would also result in overall cost savings of staff time, overtime for non-salaried employees, and consultant fees.
Okay. Questions, comments? Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna remain consistent with my previous thoughts that I understand the desire, but I, no way, no how can support moving from two to one a month. I did hear a comment about that doesn't stop us from meeting with our constituents, and I absolutely understand and agree with that. Frankly, I think we spend a lot of time doing that already, but I think it's important to have a place for the people of the City of Hollister to come and express their concerns, and reduce it to once a month just seems flawed in my, my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I actually, I've always been a believer in the less government meets, the better off we all are as a, in government. I, I think the Congress should meet much less. It'd be more of a part-time. I think the state should have fewer meetings. I think we'd be way better off if the state didn't meet as much. I know here, we tried to actually go the opposite direction, where we tried three meetings to see if we can get more work done, and that was an absolute disaster. And two meetings has worked, but I, I think sometimes I feel we, we don't give you staff enough time because we're always trying to get something new on there. I'm personally willing to try one meeting. I think we could probably, can we do it like a test and see how that works out? Would that be something we could do?
The thought process, if we did do a test, is that what we would do is have council, it's gonna roll off a ton real well, have council cancel the second meeting of the month in that way, because our municipal code currently says two meetings a month.
So, my, my concerns with that is, I, I agree with Tim Burns, is that, you know, I don't know, I, I kind of like the public being able to come in more than once a month. The other thing is, so it's 10 o'clock now. How long, how early are we gonna start them? Because I would rather start earlier than stay late, which is gonna mess with people's schedules. But, um, I don't know. I could maybe try it once, but I, I kind of believe in two meetings is, is good.
Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. And my position is, I stated this last time, I don't think there's any harm in trying. I don't think there's any harm in, so I understand the concern about having to change the municipal code. Is it the municipal code? So, that's fine, that we can cancel it. And then, would it be okay to accommodate Councilmember Perez's request about moving it forward? And if so, how could we do that? Because I think that if we're gonna try one meeting a month, then we should move it earlier as well. So, how could we possibly do that without having to amend the code?
Without amending the code, we can't. It would have to be a special meeting.
And, and I was just, I was just wondering what it would look like. I didn't say I was going for it, because I, I would have, I have to be convinced to go to less than two meetings a month.
Yeah.
I, I would like to do one every other month, but it's not what I signed on for.
Well, we could try. I, you know, I, I think it's about, you know, I've, I've said this to all of you. I, I'm really impressed with the work we've been doing this year, and how efficient we have been getting things done, in really a relatively short amount of time. There was a time last year, the year before, it's 1 o'clock in the morning. And a lot of that was just because there was just so. and a lot of that was just because there was just so much talking over and over and over again, and not moving in, moving on the business. But I, you know, I like your idea, if we tried every other month or something, or. I'd, I'd like to give it a shot and see how much work, what's important to me is how much more work you guys can get done, staff can get done. And that way we're following through, because I think a lot of times what I've seen over the years is we're bringing the same items back over and over again, because they're not completed. And then we're having to have this discussion again. I think, um, we make sure we, we complete our business at our meetings and give you time to complete it, and then we just get the updates.
I, I think.
Where we're at.
I think you misunderstood what I was saying, I was saying, it would be neat if we only did one meeting every other month, not rotating to, to one, one, two, not. I wasn't talking about that, I was being a little sarcastic. Um, doing less, I, I don't think we should do less than two a month.
So, okay.
Yeah.
So you're not two, so you, two, so we don't have a consensus there. So we can keep moving, moving on. I'm good either way.
So should I just withdraw?
Yeah, just withdraw.
Withdraw?
We don't have the, uh.
Yeah, I think it was just a, um, consensus anyway, so.
Yeah.
I'll just say, um, no action.
No action.
So G eight, um, procedures for flag application for a flag display. We may have overthought this a little bit, but I leave it for council to discuss.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Before we go on, it's past ten o'clock, is there consensus for council to continue?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, city clerk.
Council member, or Vice Mayor Resendez, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, um, that I think we should just do what San Juan Batista, I said that at the last council meeting, just scrap this all together, I think that was my language. Um, I think that it's never been a really, uh, that big of an issue, and if any council member wants to bring a flag forward for us to consider, then they should have every right to do that. Um, I think we added, we might have overcorrected ourselves here. I think that's what the county, what the clerk was alluding to. Um, but, you know, we were elected by the people to represent them, and if they request us to bring forth a flag, then any council member should be able to do that, and then we should have that discussion, make a decision, and move on. I think that, um, you know, maybe there was some good intention behind the flag policy. In fact, I think that there was, even though I didn't support it, but we've seen what that turned into, and I think we should just go back to the way that it was, um, in the beginning, and I really like how San Juan Batista adopted that as their policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
May I? If I could just add to that, that if that is something we do, the council decides to do, perhaps the one application, because I only have one sitting out there for May of twenty twenty-two, could come forward prior to us doing that.
Um, we're gonna have to wait on that one. Um, also, because there is another one, the Christian flag. Yeah.
Out there, yeah.
And, and that's, that's my concern with this whole thing, is, um, where's the equity in this whole process? If my, if the flag, that Christian flag one is, um, tabled, we're gonna send it to the state attorney general, which I'm really upset with, um, our city attorney, I have not gotten a copy of the letter that he was supposed to send to the attorney general to know exactly what he was asking. I haven't heard any response from that, I'm, I'm deeply, um, I'm, I'm saddened that he's not, um, following that direction. Um, um, but, so when we talk about, I, I mean, I, I'm mixed on this, this topic, because it's like someone, some wise told, some wise person told me, and I'm not gonna mention Tim's name, but just because you get to do a, uh, you follow the, the building permits, you pay for your fees, all that stuff doesn't mean that it's gonna be approved. And just, and it's, it's, um, it just seems pretty much the same or similar situation with the flags situation. So basically, um, eliminate that, and then I can be, um, um, the Christian flag can be denied. I mean, at least, at least before, at least I had a, a, an application process with rules that we can't discriminate against, and yet, we're not gonna let that happen. So it's like, it's like, yeah, why, why put rules into place and not follow them? So, yeah, we might as well get rid of them, right?
I think that's the point, it's just get rid of the rules, and then the council can bring one up, and then we can make a decision on yes or no, and be done with it, instead of going through all the procedures of a hundred signatures and so on. That way it streamlines it, group wants to bring it, they just contacted council member. As I'm understanding, San Juan does it this way, correct, Mr. Resendez?
Yes, exactly, they'll have, um, a council member sponsor and bring it forth. So I don't necessarily think that if the quote-unquote rules were in place, that the outcome for the other flags would have been any different. I think that they would have been the same, and that's kind of what the problem is, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get at, is that we should just have that discussion at the, on the dais, and, um, we're gonna take action whatever way we see fit. Uh, we're elected to see the peo-, to, I'm sorry, to represent the people, they can contact us and then we can bring it forth.
May I ask if it would be possible to perhaps bring both the applications forward again to council? For, I, I, I don't know.
I don't think it changes the applications that are already there, so that, it shouldn't be a conversation about what's been applied for.
For the future.
Yeah, it's about future applications, whether we approve the other ones or not, that's a different conversation. This is about future things. Those have been applied for, they're still gonna come through, um, we'll go from there. You had a question or comment?
I, I did, Mayor, thank you. So, um, at our last council meeting, I, I heard Vice Mayor Resendez and his point, and, and I, I've thought a lot about it, and it makes a lot of sense to me. And, and I can certainly sense the frustration of, of changing direction, but I, I actually think I may have been the catalyst to ask staff to create a policy, and, and it's simply got more complicated than I think it needs to be, and I think it's, it, it, it's been divisive for our community versus uniting our community. And I think it could be as simple as having a member of our community approach a member of council, bring it to that council member's attention, and, and it could be as simple as a, a, a simple majority on the, on the dais vote to approve it, once we have a full council. You know, I, I didn't realize until last meeting that if we're not, uh, a full council on the dais, that it has to be unanimous, and so, um, we'll get beyond that point, I think, and we can simplify this. And I think it will, we can make it a more of a community poll than, than it feels like it is now, where it seems like we're, we're, we're challenged and we're struggling. I, I did want to say that I do support, um, bringing the Christian flag forward. I am, I am anxiously awaiting to hear what the state attorney general's legal written opinion is, and I too have asked the city attorney to provide me with a copy of what has been sent, uh, and I've yet to see that either. So I, I might not sense, uh, council member Perez's frustration at that, but I, I can absolutely sympathize, if not empathize, with you on that, council member Perez, and I do think that, um, there should be some degree of accountability. And it i- it is an important issue, and for me, um, I, I, I just think we've made this harder than it has to be, and I do trust in the council's common sense and good judgment on this, and, and, and I do think it's probably an unnecessary waste of city resources, as well as community resources, to go chase down a hundred signatures. I'm pretty comfortable with the fact that if, if I had taken the time, I would have been successful in getting a minimum of a hundred people to sign a petition to fly the breast cancer awareness flag in the month of October, but nobody in the community brought it forward, and I chose not to pursue it personally, because I was trying to depersonalize it, not personalize the conversation, and further polarize our community on something like this. We have a lot of things that are, uh, important, and certainly I'm not saying this is not important, but it seems to have taken a lot of staff's time and council's time, and it's done exactly the opposite of what I thought it would do by having a good, clear, sound public policy. And so I, I would absolutely support, uh, Vice Mayor Resendez's position on this, that we, we recall the policy and, and, and do as has been suggested by, by the Vice Mayor, the Mayor, and council member Perez in this regard. And I also would like to suggest for council's consideration that we buy more than one or two clips, because those polls are absolutely capable, the community poll, of holding probably at least four flags. And at some point, we know when we're not flying another flag, and I still think that the top flag on that community poll should be the City of Hollister flag, um, whether it be the temporary one, or the one our, our commission is working to create now through community engagement. And so, um, I, I think there's a lot of opportunity there, and, and maybe the only conversation that would be difficult, other than yes and no from the dais, would be, do we allow for it to go for one day, ten days, twenty days, a full month? And, and depend, depending on the, uh, the organization, I think that will drive that. I mean, I absolutely a hundred percent agree with the LGBTQ plus flag flying the entire month of June. I absolutely support the law enforcement flag flying the month of May, and, and, and there are several other worthy ones. I mean, as I understand it, um, uh, Disability Awareness Month is the month of August, if, if I'm not mistaken.
Special Olympics also.
And, and that could have been a great flag to fly, and I, and, and so whether it be a council member bringing that request forward, or a member of their community, I think we can get to a win-win situation, and so, um, I, I think we just go there, frankly. Thank you, Mayor, for the time to comment.
Turn it into a good thing, absolutely. Go ahead, Mr. Perez.
So, so I think one of the things, the potentials that I see, and I, it's like I mentioned before, it's like, we're gonna have more than one flag. We're gonna need more than just one flag a month, and it's like, um, uh, so the, the thing's gonna be, and this, I'm just looking to the future, it's like, when you got two flags coming in, it's like, um, who's gonna go on top? That's why I, I would suggest, this is just another suggestion, if we get one flag for the month, the month, that flag goes up. Two flags, you split the month. Whoever comes in first, gets to the podium first, gets to, uh, because it's gonna be a difference. When you, when you, I'm into, I love flags. I, I'm a Raider fan, I love my flag, even when I lose. So, but, you know what, it's like, it's just being true, and you know, you always want your flag on top. It's, there's, there's, there's an order to, if you look at the, um, the flag, um, ethics for the federal and the state, there, there's an order. And so I think that people are gonna want their flag to be on top. Me, it's like, I think that it should just be, you, however many flags you have, you split it up during those days. Whoever comes in, whoever presents first, goes first, gets to pick his, his time, and second one, and so on, and so on. That's how I feel.
If I can make a quick suggestion?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I would just say that we should, um, I think you bring up some valid points, but I think we should discuss those when, and if and when we bring up the, the flags to be adopted. That would be my suggestion, and then, I, lastly, I just want to say that this doesn't have to be a negative thing. I think this turned out to be a positive thing, we all learned from it, and it brought awareness to all these other causes that exist, and all these other flags that we could potentially bring forth. So to me, that's a win. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So just in response to council member Perez's comment, again, I think positioning could absolutely become an issue. But again, if we were to fly the city flag at the top of that poll, at best, you're gonna be in second position, and that doesn't mean you're second best or third best unless you're Raiders flag flyer.
I knew you were gonna go there.
But, but on a serious note, I think, you know, i- i- if we're predicting them, we can prevent a lot of those conver, or those challenges. And, and, and this, this is, I, I couldn't agree more with the Vice Mayor, this is absolutely growing pains of this council moving forward, but in a positive way, to do good things for our community, and I think our spirit of cooperation exemplifies that well, and, you know, we're gonna take some missteps. As long as they're baby steps, I think we're good. So thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to comment.
Absolutely, I, I think this turned into a, a better way to do it, and I think, uh, Vice Mayor Resendez said it best. It's, it brought awareness from the community, and there's many groups, and I, if there is to, to a coin toss, make it fair, somebody outside of the council do a coin toss and figure that out, and we move on. Because Mr. Burns is right, it doesn't mean you're second best or third best. You're part of the community. And, that's right, and we should be proud of it. So I, I think this has turned into a good thing. So I would support repealing what we, uh, had the resolution. If we need to do that in a future meeting, is that what we, bring it back?
I could even do that as, as early as September twentieth, just to rescind the whole thing.
So then what do we do about the applications that are in process?
Those are still in process, those, those don't change. All that's fair and square, they're, so, right? Okay, we can do that, okay. At that time, would you make that policy that basically, uh, this thing just brings it to a council member and, or?
If, if it's okay with you, if I can just run the language by council member Burns, I'll just do a staff report when I rescind the one. It'll just state, or maybe work with, um, Vice Mayor Resendez on what that language should say.
Keep it very simple.
Or we could borrow the, um, language from the City of San Juan Batista.
Perfect, yep, I will, I will contact Trish, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Perez?
The, um, um, and so there is no, like, just, so if they come today, we can put it up tomorrow? Is, is it that quick of a process? I mean, I mean, I, I'm just, it's a question.
It would still be brought to a council meeting?
It'd be brought to a council meeting for approval, and then if it's approved, it.
Goes up the next day.
So I guess the process would be, if, if you received a request, you would let, um, the city clerk's office know? We would put a, a staff report on? It wouldn't be a resolution, it wouldn't be anything like that, it would be probably a G three consensus thing, and boom, we're done.
So for clarification, though, it, it wouldn't necessarily require a member of the community. If one of the council members wanted to a, author a request.
Absolutely.
As well, thank you.
Yes.
It would actually come from the council, we would only accept it from the council.
Yeah, so you could do, bring it yourself, yes. Okay.
So, just for clarity, so someone wants to get a flag done in my district, they call me?
They can call you, yes, sir.
Although they could call any member of the council.
Okay.
This is a, a citywide.
Okay.
Right.
That's right.
Is easier for them. So, okay, there's consensus on that? All right, okay. Now we'll move to item G nine, Zoom meetings.
Okay, G, G nine is for Zoom continuance, and I have actually gotten an update, just like, um, we had, you had said. Um, um, that's to the mayor. Um, on March seventeenth, when the California governor, um, issued the executive order N two nine, which amended the executive order N two five, and I provided them all for you, as part of a series of emergency measures in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, executive order N two nine allowed local or state legislation, legislative bodies to hold meetings via teleconference and to make meetings accessible electronically without violating the open meetings laws found in the Bagley Keen Act or the Brown Act. The order waives certain provisions of the Brown Act, including requirements that meetings be conducted in physical locations, and that a majority of the teleconferencing members are physically present within the agency's jurisdictional boundaries. Those were all waived. There is a new executive order N zero eight two one, which established a timeline to lift that COVID pandemic waiver, and under, um, the governor's reopening plan, the Brown Act provisions with executive order N two nine twenty, as well as California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA provisions with an executive order N five four twenty, and as extended by executive order N eighty twenty, paragraph six, it will expire on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. So any local agency meetings taking place after that time must ensure physical public access to all meeting locations. The lifting of this executive order N two nine twenty does not mean that public agencies will be precluded from allowing the public to participate in meetings by telephone through systems like Zoom. If we continue Zoom, it would require notice of city council member participation, location to be given to the city clerk's office in advance, no later than the Wednesday prior to each city council meeting, so that we could place it on the agenda, the location in which you are going to Zoom from. It will allow, um, the city council member would also need to post the agenda at the location that they planned to Zoom from seventy-two hours in advance, and allow the public to attend at that location. The same would apply to all commission agendas as well, or any other, um, I guess, either youth committees, if anyone were going to participate by Zoom that are agendized. Um, so my question was, if we wanted to continue using Zoom, however, about two fourteen P M. today. So my question was, if we wanted to continue using Zoom, however, about 2:14 PM today, we received that there's an A B 361, Assembly Bill 361. And Assembly Bill 361 is, I'm not sure exactly when it's going to go before the assembly. But basically, if it passes, it would extend, they would allow for legislative bodies to keep conducting meetings virtually, and we won't have to follow that part of the Brown Act that requires us to list the addresses. For this Assembly Bill to work, the state must have declared a state of emergency, and your legislative body must report out every 30 days after their first meeting, using this as to why they are meeting virtually. So I have, I didn't provide it to you, but I will email you a copy of this Assembly Bill 361. It was introduced by Assembly Member Robert Rivas. And again, I'm not, I don't see here, it was last amended in the Senate on September 3rd, 2021, but I'm not sure if it's passed.
Christine?
Yes.
So AB 339, which was co-authored by Assembly Member Robert Rivas, was passed, I believe, in the Assembly. And it's now going to the Senate, I believe, and that's going to extend it to December 31st, 2023. So I mean, I could be wrong, but I did speak to the author, Assembly Member Lee, about this, and Robert Rivas about this a few months ago. So I think we need to do a little bit more research, I would say, to find out, like, exactly where we're at with it. And then, yeah, that would be my my primary thoughts. And then I've just got a couple of other thoughts whenever we move to comments.
So my thought then would be, if I could bring this back on the 20th, to see if there's any updates I could provide at that time. I will also research AB 339 and be sure that, not only that I send them to you, but that I attach them to the next staff report, so the public has access to them as well.
And if I can just say a couple of words, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you. So the pandemic thrust us into this new technology era and age, right? But honestly, guys, we were behind the times before that. So we've got to look at the benefits that come out of using technology. I heard Councilmember Tim Burns' request that he would like all department heads to be here at every meeting, and and I wholeheartedly agree with that. I support that. But I don't necessarily think they need to be in the chambers. I'd like them to be attending at least on Zoom if we have any questions. I mean, that's something that's that's, you know, a little bit more flexible, and it's something that we could do to accommodate them and and their families and all the hard hours that they work. You know, I've got a sick daughter here at home right now. Um, you know, she was home all day by herself, and I'm here trying to cater to her and stuff. It's just, this is the way of the world, and it is very convenient. We're all getting used to it. It's very convenient. I'll be there when I can, just like anybody else, and I know that this is a little bit, could be controversial for some people. They're very passionate about their position. But I, if anybody knows me, I'm a bit of a techie, and I really enjoy, and I like to see that we're moving forward and we're adapting and and we're including all of these tools to our disposal. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. Unlike Vice Mayor Resendez, I am a technological dinosaur. I carry a flip phone, and I'm proud to say I know how to use it most of the time. Having said that, I have actually been forced, as a result of the pandemic, to embrace technology. And as a direct result of that, regardless of the posting requirements, regardless of what what passes or not, I I think it still provides a viable alternative under a certain set of circumstances. I wouldn't want it to be the norm, but Councilmember, Vice Mayor Resendez was absolutely correct. I did ask on one of my longer laundry lists and council comments that to have the department heads here in the event there are questions. But absolutely agree, if we could find a way that that works, where they could Zoom in from home or wherever, I I think that works well. And and I think it gives us other options, and I do think we have to work smarter, not necessarily longer or harder. And so I would like us to to move forward with Zoom as an option, regardless of what the requirements are in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
If I may also just clarify, that that Zoom requirement and posting certificate would only be for council? Possibly city attorney and city manager, but for sure council, and I'll I'll double check on that. But it wouldn't be for any member of the audience or department head.
Councilmember Perez? Go ahead, sir.
I'd love to Zoom in from the middle of the lake.
Yeah, I was going to say.
But sure. But my my only concern is, and I think it's a great tool to use, my my only concern is, when we're in closed session, I think it should, we should be video. We should be a live feed, just during closed session. Because we're supposed, we're supposed to be, know that we're all secluded, and that there's no public access to that. And I think that at least during a closed session, that it should be a live feed, video feed. But the rest of it, leave a blank screen, put a picture up. I think, I think that's my only issue.
I, I'm sort of like Mr. Burns. I'm kind of not the most tech savvy person, but I've been amazed at how this has turned out. And I think Mr. Resendez is correct, we are really behind the times, and we didn't know it until this came about. And it it has changed our world completely. I personally like to be here, if it's in a safe environment, which I think it is now. But there's times where you can't, and if you can Zoom in, why not? I mean, it's just, why not? And I I would like to continue, if we can, with it. I think it it's worked out well. And I'm sure in the near future, that's probably going to end up being the the standard for a lot of communities, is Zooming in for different reasons. But that's all I have to say with that. Do we have any public comment? No public comment?
Elia, wake up.
No. Christine has to wake up. I did put my name in.
I know. I'm sorry.
Okay.
We are.
I forgot to call you on G P. I think I called me on all of them.
They all look the same.
My apologies, Elia. I am so sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. I do want to speak on, well, I want to speak on a lot of them, but on on number nine, I agree that the times have changed. And I personally have been asking that the city council be here personally, and it hasn't happened, and it's, I I haven't been here for a while. I've been on on Zoom. It's very convenient, and I appreciate the mayor being here. I don't know how long he's been showing up, but I finally see that he is here. So following the rules, and I know, I realize that Councilman Resendez's daughter is sick, but that doesn't mean, and I do not, I I do not condone, and I don't, I don't think we should have the council members give out their home address if that, you know, Councilman Resendez's home. Right now, I don't think he should publicly notice his address, that that's where he's at, because I don't think that people should be showing up to his house, because that's where he's Zooming from. I think it's dangerous. I know that we've had, people showed up to a former council member, Honor Spencer's house, knocking on her door. You don't know who who's coming or going to your door, so I don't think, you know, it's, you know, for Councilman Resendez, who has, you know, a child there, it's dangerous to have.
Christine, do we have the timer on? I'm sorry, Elia.
It's on. Go ahead.
My apologies.
Okay. So anyway, I don't know what the rule is exactly that it says. I know he has to post, and if he can post and say he's going to be doing it from home, then that's good enough, without having to put the address out there. But it hasn't been, it hasn't been noticed. That's the problem. So the the times have changed, the Zoom is so convenient. We haven't been doing any traveling. You've either been in the city, or you've been home, or you've been at work. And if you can't make it here, you're caught in traffic or whatever, you're able to Zoom. I know I've done it, paid attention. But you can pull over, which I've had to pull over, because I've got comments to do or whatever. And and it's so convenient. But again, I prefer that the council members, you're here to represent the entire city, and you should be here at the dais. The department heads, I think it would be okay for them to be at home. You know, we have one right behind me, and she hasn't had to come up and speak or anything, but she could have been home Zooming it. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perez? Did we have any other speakers first? Sorry.
I have no other speakers.
Elia again.
Councilmember Perez?
So what about, what about, Paul? How you doing? How does, how does Zoom, the Zoom meetings affect you? I mean, is it, does it matter? Or or the rest of the staff? You too, you count too.
Hello, council. Sitting over there in the in the corner, running the Zoom, helping the city clerk. It has been a challenge to get this all figured out. And, you know, now that it's all kind of figured out, we got kind of the technology to be able to do it. It's easier and, you know, more convenient for the public to to be able to make their comments and and attend and and view. You know, the concern that's kind of out there is the ability of anybody in the world to be able to Zoom and take up valuable time, you know, of business that's Hollister business that's not really, you know, external business and stuff like that. But the, you know, that that is out there. Besides that, you know, I think it it took quite a bit to kind of get everything, you know, the audio stuff to get worked out, the the camera stuff to get worked out, even helped San Juan Batista and the county kind of help get them going too. It does take a lot of my time as far as being able to help manage it, operate it. It's definitely not a one-person, you know, show. You definitely need an assistant, an assistance to the city clerk to help manage this whole thing. So that's all I have to say as far as.
Yeah, just real quick to add on to what Paul was saying about our coastal neighbor cities, they're having that issue, that anybody can, from around the world, can call in on an issue. So you're not getting our our citizens commentating on our local issues. So that, it's always something that you need to kind of keep in the back of your mind.
You know, there's always going to be issues.
Right.
There's always going to be issues. And, you know, that might happen one off here and there. But overall, again, I've I've been amazed at the process, and I want to thank you for making it work for us, because you did get ahead of most people on on this. And I'm glad to hear you helped others. It's not perfect. Nothing is. And we've had issues in the past without Zoom, of people coming here that were from, not in town, or for different reasons. So no perfect thing. I think it's working well. Like it to be there in case we need it. There's times where I can't make it physically here, but if I can Zoom, that'd be great. Except on my anniversary, my wife won't have any part of that. But.
Yeah, I would say our consultants, you know, it's saved us in consultant time, so that's been very nice also.
Yeah, exactly. For consultants, that's a perfect example. Instead of somebody having to drive two hours down here and two hours back, billing us for that, by the way, they can just get online and take care of it, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Perez had a comment.
The the last comment is, I promise, is, maybe we can fix that in there a little bit better? Behind closed, in closed session?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's.
That's a challenge.
But you know, you, this guy, I I'll drive by 5:30 in the morning, and he's here.
Yeah.
He'd be, it's like, he wakes up the rooster.
I wake them up.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Resendez.
Thank you. Three quick points. Number one, usually I can see the timer on my screen, and I didn't see it, so I thought the timer wasn't running. So I apologize, I wasn't trying to cut off your time. Number two, I agree with the speaker about the safety concerns. We're living in some very scary divisive times, right? But I have faith in the legislators, and I think that they'll work all that out throughout the process, right? We'll figure it out as we go. And then, number two, I think that we have a potential, and we have seen more public engagement with being on Zoom and making it more accessible to people living in a commuter town. They can, as Ms. Salinas pointed out, pull over if they want, and they can listen to it on the way over here, and then they can, you know, make comments and whatnot. So I'd like to see more, and I've stressed this to to our already busy staff there, more of a social media presence, more of technology presence rather than less. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
The only other thing I would like to say is that if we were to continue with Zoom, is to have a place for Paul to sit. So we would have to work something out over here, because I don't think that's viable back there. And 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 it's basically turning the video on and off on the timer, unmuting, muting people, and then sharing screens. If, the reason we share the screen is because Roland's Zooming in, so he's not going to be able to see anything if we don't share the screen. If everyone were here, we could just do it on the monitor. So there's tricks to every little part of it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that it? Thank you.
So I'm asking for council consensus to continue with Zoom?
There was a consensus.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. H I J K, there's no business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second roll call, please.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Resendez?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries for O. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.